Good morning, everyone. We have reached the 10 o'clock hour. I will call the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, December the 5th, 2024, to order. If you would finish your conversations. Ellie, thank you. All right, before we get started, there's a couple of housekeeping items to cover. Number one, Mr. Gilbert will not get here until he gets off of the bench. Business comes first, I suppose. Justice must prevail. So that item will be heard when he gets here. And for those of you who are here for items six, seven, and eight. Item six will not be heard until after 1:00. Item seven will not be heard till after 1:00. Item eight may or may not be heard because it's been a request for a continuance by Verizon as they look for alternate locations. So if you're here for number eight, we probably will not be hearing that today. We will call it on the agenda when it's proper time. And we'll see what happens from then, but don't be too optimistic. Okay. Having said all that, first thing on our agenda is always the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led today by Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie.
If you could please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comment is the next item on the agenda. Before the public comment starts, I would ask that if you are here for a specific item, please wait and hold your public comment until that item is heard on the agenda. And the Board of County Commissioners conducts the business of Douglas County and its citizens during its meetings. The Board may impose reasonable content-neutral restrictions on public comments such as comments that are on topic and are not within the jurisdiction, authority, or control of the Board of County Commissioners, or if the content of the comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of other speakers. And there's a whole page of this stuff, but I will just say, a public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board Chairman. Board of County Commissioners use as timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down. Having said that, public comment is now open.
Good morning. Ellie Waller. Up until early yesterday evening, I thought, truly believed, that providing comment asking you as the Board to slow down the South Shore area plan was a viable request. As many governing bodies, many contentious topics appear on agendas during the holiday season, the area plan is no exception. This is not an area plan amendment, in my opinion. It is merely a contemptuous, veiled, failed attempt to fast-track Barton Hospital and Associated Healthcare Subdistrict, which has been removed, and which has cost the county in consultants' fees in excess of $80,000 to produce an initial environmental checklist that corrects the area plan boundary to eliminate a split zoning for a mobile home park, signage regulations that were omitted from the original plan, incorporating an energy conservation strategy, and providing a platform so TRPA can add their Phase II workforce housing. In what world do these ministerial changes add up to 80K, in my opinion? There is no logical reasoning to be going forward with this piecemeal planning. TRPA staff has verified that they will go forward with Phase II workforce housing amendments that they approved in December 2023 in early '25, regardless or not if our area plan is submitted. This is what an area plan amendment should look like. It's chapter by chapter, and this is not what we're doing. So I'm not sure, now that the Barton Hospital has been removed, why we're going forward. Furthermore, notwithstanding the TRPA's disingenuous guidance to Douglas County down this path, it cannot be made an excuse for disrespecting the affected property owners that do not even know they've been disrespected. All involved have made a mockery out of this process, and no one involved can or has stated the obvious, in my opinion. And 2011 is when this process began and went afoul, in my opinion. The casinos, the commercial property owners, South Tahoe Alliance of Resorts, TRPA, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, Steve Tashara representing the Prosperity Center, three representatives from Edgewood, Attorney Mr. Feldman, the Tahoe Transportation District, and other numerous stakeholders came together to draft the South Shore Vision Plan. No one, in my opinion, from the public was represented. What kind of process is this that doesn't include or request public input from those most affected? If you were living in the area plan boundary, wouldn't you want to be part of the future planning of where you live? Stop calling this effort an area plan amendment. It's not benefiting the greater population that should, which is called the Tahoe Township. Come clean because of a failed attempt to move Barton forward with built-in incentives.
Next.
I would like to see the Sheriff's Department budget increased.
Your name, please.
Pardon? Thelma Rogers. I would like to see the Sheriff's Department budget increase so that we can have more traffic enforcement on Johnson Lane. One major problem is those trucks and cars coming out of business parks on the south side of Johnson trying to turn left, and they can't. With the trucks and cars, with so many now, there is no brake in traffic. And so these big trucks from UPS and Starbucks and others have a hard time pulling out there. And some of them just pull out. They don't care about oncoming traffic or anything else. And I would have to say, mostly, I've seen that with UPS drivers. But when the trucks do get in on Johnson Lane, there's cars following that don't want to be behind the trucks, so they pass on double-yellow lines frequently. So I really would like to see an officer out there that likes to write tickets and stop some of this stuff, and help these truck drivers get out in traffic safely. I mean, I'm sure all of you have tried to make a left turn, and, oh, there's a car just that much too far. I can't do it right now, I gotta wait. That one's just a little... And that's what's happening out there. There's just not the brake there should be for these guys to get out, and it's going to be very dangerous pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Piggybacking on Thelma, this is Stacy Clark. I used to live off of Pyramid Way, and we had two gravel mines and the trucks that pulled out. And if you look at the crash data, which I'm happy to share, I pulled it, the crash data increased drastically with the advent of those gravel trucks that Thelma was talking about. So I do concur with her with regards to safety. I'm here because I'm concerned about the ordinance 2024-1639. It, in my opinion, is a Band-Aid on the problem and not inclusive of Fremont. It doesn't allow for traffic controls, and frankly, you all have the ability to run it up the flagpole to get permitted vehicles and permitted trucks out there. I do not support this. I know today is just the first reading. I know it's not open for public comment. And as you know, I'm a retired scientist. So while I'm not here in support or denial of the cell phone tower, as a previous teacher, I also can state that please take the studies that they have done seriously. I would like to oppose that ordinance and ask for it to be replaced with a permit-only truck. With your license plate readers that you're asking for monies up at Tahoe, you can easily put in license plate readers at the access egress and ingress of the mine. So that is my conclusion. Thank you.
Jim Jackson. Excuse my voice, it's breaking up today a little bit. First thing I'd like to clear up is I received, I did not receive it, but an email was sent to me stating that I was in favor of this ordinance that you're going to bring up for the first reading today. I believe when I mentioned in open meeting, I was in favor of an ordinance that restricted traffic on the side streets. That was correct. But I am not in favor of this ordinance because it falls very short on what needs to be done up in the area. Fremont was not included. East Valley, south of Johnson Lane, was not included. And a four-way stop at Johnson and Fremont is not included in here. All those things should be included, plus much more. So I am not in favor of this ordinance the way it is written. I want to make that very clear. One of the other things, and I just changed my whole approach this morning, is a flawed agreement between Knox and the county was made based on a flawed environmental study. Two flaws do not make a right. This whole thing is an absolute mess. And in the spring, when the trucks start really moving down there, we're going to have some real problems. It's up to you folks to fix the problems that have now been created, and a lot of people are going to be here to say that. The other thing that I was going to mention is, when this agreement came up, you didn't listen to the people. We had this room filled, the hallway filled, the front lawn filled, and a petition with over 700 names on it that was all put together in two days, and you did not pay any attention to that. That was not a good idea. Now you've got these cell towers going in. I hope you pay attention and listen to the people that live in the area on these items. I don't hold much hope to that because you didn't listen to us. And the last thing at this point that I want to bring up is, I read an article in the paper about four weeks ago about the budget of the county, and how much of it went to employees, how much of it went to benefits for the employees, how much of it went to turning on the lights in the county buildings. And when you were all said and done, you only had like $4 million left over. A person mentioned to me this morning that even at that point, it was refined further to where there's maybe only $1 million left over. You can't fix the roads that need to be fixed, you can't do any of the other stuff. So I was thinking, maybe we need to get Elon to come into the county and take a look at it, like he's going to do to the federal government, and see where we can cut back. Thank you.
Morning. My name's Ron Conway. My wife and my house back up to Johnson Lane. I'm here today to talk about your proposed ordinance that is going to make a bad situation a whole lot worse. You don't understand truck traffic. You have no clue. Come spring and summer, when the trucks actually start running, because you ain't seen nothing yet, what's going to happen is the cars traveling on Johnson Lane are not going to want to be behind those trucks anymore. Now they're going to go to Stephanie and all the side roads. So now you're going to have double and triple the traffic on Stephanie, where there's a school. What you need to be looking at is how to get some of those trucks off that road. And how you do that is stop the bypass. Most of those trucks go down that road, turn right on Fremont, because they don't want to go down 395 and through town. You can take 25 to 50 trucks off that road a day with the correct ordinance. This is not it. Not by a long shot. Now, I spent all my life in the public sector. I was the guy who thought out of the box. There is a way to get it done. You folks have not asked, you have not thought about it. In fact, the only thing I hear in this building is, "We can't do that." You know what happened to you in the public sector if you said, "Oh, we can't do that"? You'd be looking for a new job. I worked for two of the most successful companies in the country. Their philosophy was, you don't say, "We can't do that." You say, "How do we get it accomplished?" It's a mindset. All you folks just give up. We can't do nothing. That's not true. It's not the fact. If you ask for help, the residents have more experience and more capability and more knowledge than this entire building. But you don't ask for help. You shove stuff down our throat. That agreement is absolutely absurd. You need to take trucks off Johnson Lane before you can start to fix any problem. I'm not talking all of them, I'm not talking Knox. I'm talking the ones that use Johnson Lane and Fremont as a throughfare, a bypass. And if you don't believe me, put somebody out there in Sharon, count the trucks that go by.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Beth Wallace. I'm an 11-year resident of Zephyr Heights. Commissioners, I know this is an agenda item that is going to come up, item six, and I will make specific comments at that time. But over the lunch break, now that it's being heard this afternoon, I would ask you to postpone any action on the CONSERVE Nevada MOU presented today by the Douglas County Board of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm requesting this because, as you are aware, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board had a meeting planned this last Tuesday, and that was postponed due to a violation of the Nevada Open Meeting Law, and it's been rescheduled for Monday, December 9th. So I ask that you postpone any action. As the public and residents of our area, we have not had any questions answered or any input provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm also asking for the same point. Agenda item six should be pulled from today's agenda. The community outreach through Parks and Recreation Meeting has been short notice canceled due to OML violation. As said, it was rescheduled for Monday. We have not had time to vet this, and we don't have an opportunity to familiarize ourselves with the item. So I please ask you to reconsider and pull it from the agenda. Thank you.
Fred Farley, for the record. When I was preparing, I just noticed there's going to be some confusion. If I talk about the Board, I mean the TREGID Water Board, and if I talk about you folks, I mean BOCC. But I won't be really talking about you, I don't think, just for clarification. You haven't done anything wrong that I know of, but listening to all these people, I'm not too sure. I've got three minutes, and I rehearsed this, so I apologize if I talk fast. I can provide written copies. Some months ago, there was a discussion in this room before this Board, the BOCC, regarding citizen concerns about the incompetence or the competence of the TREGID Board. Since then, four of our Board members down there have all quit. All office staff have quit. Newbie efforts to fix the GID issues have been earnest, but many issues remain. At that meeting long ago, a general persons agreement resulted in a pinky swear from the GID Board to keep the BOCC posted on voluntary status reports. How's that been going for you? If you haven't gotten any reports yet, well, it's your call, but I'll bet you could learn a lot from our GID. As a regular attender of GID monthly meetings since the '90s, I offer here my own teachable moments and observations for your consideration. You guys run a good meeting here, you do. You really do. But you waste a lot of time with things like, I don't know, treasurer's reports, public information, public comment. Early in 2023, we had a treasurer just say, month after month, "There is no treasurer's report," or "I don't have one. Move on." That actually worked. Saved a lot of discussions, saved a lot of argument, saved a lot of trees. The Board now seems to have adopted a program where it only provides reports as it is able. Documents for discussion of treasurer's reports, budget audit approvals, rate increases, they're only provided when they can, and they're maybe not provided at all. When the attendees get used to it, that becomes how it is. Public is never going to be an expert in open meeting law violations. Since documents are only sporadically reported at the meetings, I have asked for copies of all treasurer's reports. If I ever get some, I'll let you know. I did get one treasurer's report back in 2023, to be fair. I couldn't make heads or tails of it, so I took it to every banker, from TRE to Carson City, and the best one, I just loved, handed it back to me laughing and said, "This looks like what my son gives me when he says, 'I'm done with my homework, I want to watch TV.'" I sent him back to his room. I know the BOCC has no direct jurisdiction over the GID, but you will when they collapse. This Board has already had to manage the failure of two very small water GIDs, and I don't think anybody involved in that process has kind memories. This TID has a half a million dollar budget and $700 water accounts. Do the math. It's not going to be fun if they collapse. We can look for ways to help them cope now while they have money and a functioning system, or we can wait till they're broke and the infrastructure is broke too. I hope you guys can do the math because I don't think the GRE GID can. Oh, yeah, this just in. Our latest treasurer just quit, and the Board members told me that they became aware that just recently, another Board member has had sole control of the checkbook, unsupervised and unreviewed.
Thank you, sir. Your three-minute...
There's lots more to report. I just ran out of time.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we will close opening comment, and somebody's rushing to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Limkey. And just in case I'm out of town when you have the 5G info, I just want to let you guys know that I personally get, it feels like I'm getting murdered when I'm around. I had to get rid of my Wi-Fi. I went with Verizon for a while, and their phone, their connection was actually cooking me internally. And it felt like you turn on a boiling oven, and you open up the door, and I just felt the heat, and I could not, you know, it felt like literally it was murdering me. So on behalf of all the red-tailed hawks, the birds, the grass, the horses, the land, I'm urging you guys not to get any more Wi-Fi, or the 5G towers. It's a weapon. And luckily, I'm old enough, and I travel kind of between the Canadian border and the Mexican border and helping people with their horses, so I'm out in the country. And I could tell you that every single area where they put the 5G towers, it's a dead zone. There's no more plants. I mean, like, there's dead grass, the hawks, the eagles, they're not flying in those areas. The horses are sad. And then usually, the old ranchers, they get crippled really quick. My dad's been trying to help with the smart meters and the, you know, doing what the city wants, and he's a very strong, powerful, great man that would run 100 miles and sprint 50s. And he's in wheelchair right now. And another rancher that I know that I'm going to go see probably next week, they had a nice ranch out in the country, they sold it, they moved into town, kind of by like a 5G tower. He just had a heart attack. He's getting, his whole body's collapsing. So for the people that are handicapped, and the people that can't really speak, or the people that don't know about nature, is not living in nature, you're living in a city, you kind of, they numb you down. They're cooking you slowly like they would cook a frog. So you don't really notice it. And I'm in and out, and so I really, really notice it. And it's, I feel that it would put every single human being, and every animal, and every life force in more of a harm's way. So I urge you...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on. I need, is there any changes to the agenda other than what I've already...
What is, what's the status with the Parks and Rec not having their meeting? Is that a requirement before we look into it?
I do not believe so. Counsel.
Thank you. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney. No. It's not required. It's advisory. And also, at this time, just to clarify, that there was no, any assertion that there's a violation of that as open meeting law is incorrect. There was a notice by the Tahoe Sierra Clean Air Coalition alleging a violation. It's a technical area, but they said that the law requires that notice where the supporting material can be located has to be in the agenda. The agenda for that advisory board said that questions concerning the agenda should be referred to Brooke Adi, Community Services Director.
Can I just, I don't really care what decision they made for why they delayed it. I guess my concern is why we want to hear it before the advisory board gives us their recommendation. I mean, this Board here, I think when we had a norms and procedures, said, "Well, we need to give really great deference to all these advisory boards if we show them we don't respect their opinions." Is there a reason why we're taking it now and not delaying it? And if there is, please let us know.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. It is my understanding that item number six is a time-sensitive matter, and we cannot wait for an advisory opinion of the advisory board in this case, in this instance. We had referred the matter to the advisory board as a courtesy; it was not required. If you have additional questions, I do have two members of staff able to step up to the microphone.
Can you tell us why it's time-sensitive?
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager for Douglas County. Just to give you an update, the Park and Recreation Commission had a special meeting planned where we noticed a large portion of the neighborhood to talk about a number of things. Primary was to get public impact or input regarding the Warrior Way parking program, a review of what happened last year, and recommendations for steps going forward. Also, to solicit a recommendation from the advisory board to restrict no parking along Highway 50 from Skyland all the way to the state line. Those were the primary. As a result of having that meeting, we stacked a number of things. This was an update to the Commission. It was not set for a recommendation. The projects being funded by this action taken on item six are already included in the county's trails plan, have been previously designed, and have been recommended and approved by this body through its planning effort. It was an update to the Park and Rec Commission and a courtesy to the neighborhood to give them... It was an update to the Park and Rec Commission and a courtesy to the neighborhood to give them a mandate, but on that matter, it was expanded slightly to talk about the intersection of Highway 28 and Highway 50, and the proposed park and ride facility, the proposed trailhead there, as well as the invasive species inspection aquatic facility, and to talk about maintenance of those facilities, and to get the Park and Recreation Commission to weigh in that section as an advisory. It was not specific action by the Park and Recreation Advisory Board to hear or make a motion regarding this action since it had been previously approved by this body, as well as the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Also included was an opportunity for the fire district up at the lake to talk about the helicopter pad at George Wettel High School. And so that was really the content, it was just kind of bringing the community together. It truly was unfortunate that that meeting got canceled, because, you know, we were hoping to cover a lot of ground.
Mr. Morgan, I love hearing your responses, and I'm going to miss them after January. I guess I didn't hear, though, why there was a time sensitivity of approving this now.
Because we're cooperating with other agencies, Washto County, who are trying to solicit this, this, the long story, and we'll give you some history on that item. This is the reauthorization of ballot question number one, which is a $200 million bond issued by the state of Nevada sometime back. And it was reauthorized about six years ago by the state legislature. Included was $5 million for the bike path in Tahoe. And so Douglas County wants to get in line to compete for that money for this pre-approved, pre-prepared, pre-authorized section along Edgewood, along Highway 50, not narrowing Highway 50, this has been previously designed, and to enhance the Laurel Drive Trailhead. And it's time-sensitive because we would like to compete with Washto County and Carson City for a portion of that money to make these improvements.
Mr. Chair.
I had a follow-up.
Mr. Chair, wait, wait a minute. Mr. Chair, I believe this is out of order, because we are discussing an item that's on the agenda before we've even approved the agenda.
No, we are discussing the agenda.
There has been no motion, then?
No, there has not been a motion.
So we're discussing.
I've asked if there were any changes or corrections to the agenda.
So I think we need to approve the motion, or the agenda, and then we can discuss whether or not. I guess we need to have a motion before we discuss whether or not we want to remove an item from the agenda, is what I'm suggesting.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not real sure how these rules work, but it seems to me, if you're going to make a motion before you have the facts to determine what you want on the agenda, how do you do that? I'm not, just let me finish for a sec, let me finish for a second. I have no prob, I'm not going to make a motion to change the agenda. I wouldn't want to unless I know the facts of whether it should be on or not. So I ask simple questions to get information of whether it should be or not. And I think that's what this discussion was. I was only going to ask one more thing to, to Mr. Morgan, if I can.
Please do, so that we can get on.
Well, I mean, we could get on real quick and not even have it, if you wanted that. My last question was, you said you want to compete with those other two agencies, but this M O U is a cooperating document, so we would all be working together with it. Are you saying if we don't address this on December 5th instead of December 19th, we would no longer be a part of this M O U?
You and I may have Community Services Director A.D. respond to that, but part of that is, there's $5 million available, and we all understand that that's most likely going to be used for improvements or match. And we want to be part of the M O U to, I guess, compete federally or statewide for additional funds and make sure our project in Douglas County is in the program. And if Brooke has something she'd like to add to say, if we don't do it now, it's just going to be Washto County and Carson County who are part of the M O U. And so we would like to cooperate with them to make sure that our project is included in this proposal.
That's a very good reason, thank you.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved in second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the consent calendar. And I don't see in here anything for approving the minutes of the last meeting unless I already covered that and then got distracted. I'm sorry?
It's not in there.
It is not in there. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
There are no minutes from the last meeting, sir.
There are no minutes?
No.
Okay. In that case, I need to discuss the consent calendar. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar items as presented, A through R.
Do we have a second? They moved in second to approve the consent calendar, items A through R. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now we'll get to the administrative agenda. And I will again note that items seven and eight, six, seven, and eight will not be heard until after 1 o'clock. So if you're here for those, enjoy your lunch. Now, for presentation, I have not, and he is here, for presentation, Proclamation 2024 P-131, recognizing East Fork Township Justice of the Peace, Paul Gilbert, for 42 years of dedicated service to Douglas County. And I will come down to read the proclamation. Thank you.
Do you want to invite your fellow commissioners?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Fellow commissioners, if you'll join me, and Paul, I'm sorry, your honor.
Good to see you, my friend.
Paul usually shuns public notoriety.
Very much.
Yes, you do. However, we're not going to let you do that today. This is a proclamation recognizing Paul Gilbert for 42 years of dedicated service to Douglas County as a judge for the, and as a judge for the East Fork Township. Whereas, and I hope I can get through this, sir. If you get choked up, I'm done. Whereas, Paul Gilbert's family roots date back to the 1800s in the Carson Valley. He was the youngest of three brothers. And whereas Paul Gilbert attended local Douglas County schools and was one of the earliest members of the sheriff's office cadet program in 1972 as a junior in Douglas High School, where he was the salutation of his class and graduated in 1974. And whereas Paul was hired as dispatcher by Sheriff McCrery in his senior year of high school in July of 1978. Sheriff Maple assigned him to the jail division as a deputy sheriff, and soon promoted him to jail supervisor. And whereas Paul chose a career in law enforcement, completing the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission post in UNR's Public Management Program, he also received his Associate of Arts degree in criminal justice and an Associate of Science in General Studies from Western Nevada College. And whereas Paul ran for the East Fork Constable's office in 1982, and was sworn into the position in January of 1983. And whereas Mr. Gilbert in 1986 was asked by the then-setting East Fork Justice Court Judge Douglas Struthers to serve as Judge Protem. And whereas Mr. Gilbert was prepared to retire from public service after which was already a long and distinguished career, he stepped up once again to serve as fellow citizens when he was appointed to serve as Justice of the Peace upon the unexpected passing of the former judge. And whereas he served with distinction and honor as Justice of the Peace through 2024. And whereas Judge Gilbert has exemplified the ideas, ideals of courtesy, service, and citizenship. Therefore, be it be claimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, along with Douglas County staff and residents, that Judge Gilbert be recognized for his commitment and dedication to Douglas County and to the state of Nevada for his years of service, which enhanced the lives of many. Thank you, Paul. Paul?
Well, now that everyone's really bored, I'd like to thank you, and there's numerous people in the audience. I don't want to just pick people out that I need to thank, going from my brother to the Slater family. Thank you. So the sheriff's office has had, obviously had a, a long history with, with Paul, now Judge Gilbert.
I'm good, not certain.
My family personally has known the Gilbert family for my entire life. I think Paul was in a P E class when my dad left, when my mom gave birth to my brother and I. He's been a mentor and a friend, a perfect example for me on what to do and how to act in my law enforcement career. And you're going to be missed, this is just a memento for us, from us to you, your time on the bench. And I, I really loved being in court when you were the judge, because it worked out very well. So thank you for your service, and I know that we'll see you around, but awesome.
Thank you.
Let me get in for a picture, please.
Get in your phone.
Is there anyone who would like to join up here, Judge Gilbert?
Yeah, an awful bunch of people.
Yeah. Want to call family members forward?
Well, I don't want to hurt everybody's feelings, but there's not enough room for people on my call.
We can crowd people up, we can get this group first, and then.
Yes.
No, okay.
And before we move on, when I moved here 33 years ago, I knew one person, that was my realtor. The next person that I met was Paul. I became a reserve with Douglas County, and then later a category one deputy, and then I was Paul's first deputy constable. My serial number was 10. You have been a friend, and I can't tell you how much I love you. Thank you, Paul. And I got through that. For presentation only, presentation of proclamation 2024 P-135, recognizing Douglas County Chief of Staff Melissa Elges for excellence in public service. Would you come up, please? I got through that.
Yeah, good job. Grab the tissues.
Paul's a tough hack to follow, isn't he?
Yes.
All right, a proclamation recognizing Melissa Elges for excellence in public service. Whereas, Melissa Elges accepted the Community Relations Coordinator position for Douglas County in May 2013. In this role, Ms. Elges advocated for the importance in internal and external communication and public engagement in local government administration. As a result of her demonstrated success in this role, her position was upgraded to Community Relations Manager in 2017, and the community relations team expanded in 2019. She faithfully served in that capacity until she was promoted to Chief of Staff in October of 2022. And whereas, Ms. Elges brought extensive experience in communications and community relations to Douglas County. She has a bachelor's degree in agricultural communications. I tripped over that word, I communicate well.
You're going to say it a lot.
Yeah. And public relations from Chico State University, and a master's degree in mass communications from South Dakota State University. Whereas throughout her time with the, with the county, Melissa specialized in developing effective public information policies and procedures, streamlining the communications channels, and ensuring the Douglas County residents were actively engaged and informed. Ms. Elges advocated for and developed Douglas County's first strategic communications plan, establishing a forward-thinking vision and actionable steps to ensure the county remained innovative and effective in engaging with its residents. Additionally, she championed the creation of an internal strategic communications plan to engage employees and promote positive people-centered, service-driven culture. And, you're going to go a lot of these. Whereas, Melissa Elges served as the lead public information officer, the P I O, during numerous local and regional emergency events, including the COVID-19 epidemic, woodland, wildland fires, flooding, and civil unrest. She successfully activated and managed the Joint Information Center, coordinating with local, regional, and state agencies to deliver unified, timely emergency messaging. She created the Quad County Crisis Community Communication Council, and established a working network of regional public communicators. In addition, Melissa monitored public information officers across Nevada, serving as an instructor and inspiring many of the communications and public information professions within her expertise and guidance. Her efforts in this capacity ensured Douglas County and the state were best prepared to respond during times of emergency effectively. And whereas, Ms. Elges achieved acceptance into the Emergency Management Institute's EMI Master Public Information Officer Program, a distinction awarded to candidates who have demonstrated significant contributions to public affairs and external communications. Melissa completed 72 hours of coursework to obtain her Master's Public Information Officer accreditation, and successfully defended a case study now published in the EMI library.
I'm sorry.
You've been busy. And whereas Ms. Elges recognized that well-trained personnel are essential to excellence in public service, she focused a culture of learning and professional development in the county. She developed and facilitated training relating to supervisory management for leaders transitioning into new positions and emotional intelligence in response to employee feedback. She regularly made herself available for questions and assistance, and actively monitored other leaders in the organization. other leaders in the organization, providing them with the resources and guidance necessary to be successful in their roles. This is longer than Paul's. Whereas Ms. Ankles held leadership herself and her peers accountable for values of integrity, accountability, communication, customer service, leadership, teamwork, and respect. Understanding that people matter, Melissa created the Great People, Great Places Employee Recognition Program, a peer-to-peer initiative celebrating excellence in teamwork, leadership and accountability, communication, customer service, respect, and integrity, fostering a culture of appreciation and recognition within the county. And whereas Melissa Elges, together with her husband, under Sheriff Ron Elges, designed the first-ever autism awareness vehicle for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, an initiative aimed at promoting the Autism Alert Program and providing individuals on the spectrum with a sensory-controlled environment for positive interactions with law enforcement. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, along with Douglas County staff and residents, that Melissa is recognized for her excellence in community relations, emergency management, and public service, and her commitment and dedication to Douglas County, adopted this fifth day of December 2024, Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I love my girl.
You go. All right. Whew. I think the only person whose proclamation might be longer is going to be Scott Morgan's. I will keep my comments brief. Apparently, I used all my words in the proclamation. They were very...
Oh, you did.
Yeah. They were very well-deserved. Melissa has been a model of excellence for this organization, and frankly, she's a little bit of a unicorn in the sense that she has so much to contribute, no matter where she lands in life. So, since I have run out of words, I'm going to borrow from the words of others, and I'm going to try to keep it lighthearted so I don't lose it up here. How many people have seen the movie Wicked recently, or seen the musical? No? Okay. So, in my analogy... Trying to keep, trying to make people laugh. In my analogy, I'm wearing the green coat so you can figure out which one of us is Elphaba and which one of us is Glinda. All right. When I told Melissa that I was interested in becoming the county manager, the conversation that followed was incredibly supportive. But the version that now plays back in my head, having recently seen the musical, is Melissa said back to me, "You will be popular." And then she said, "And even in your case, though it's the toughest case I've yet to face, don't worry, I'm determined to succeed. Follow my lead. When I see depressing creatures," she was referring to me in this case, "with unprepossessing features, I remind them on their own behalf to think of celebrated heads of state or especially great communicators. Did they have brains or knowledge? Don't make me laugh. They were popular. It's not about aptitude, it's the way you're viewed." Oh, my gosh, I was going to get through. Okay. So, it's very shrewd to be very popular like me. Melissa is very well-liked in our organization, and in the proclamation, one of the things that I hope she's most proud of is promoting and fostering a culture of people in this organization matter. She invested in people, she cared about people, she mentored people, and I counted myself one of the lucky among them, and I thank her so much for her mentorship and her leadership. All right. I won't read the second song from Wicked. That reminds me of Melissa, but I will let you know that because I have known you, you have changed me for good, and I thank you so much for that. Last quote, Melissa's a big Brene Brown fan. If you're a student of leadership, she quotes Brene, and I completely understand why, given your background. And Brene has adopted this quote from Theodore Roosevelt, which has always been a really pointed source of comfort for me, and definitely something that we have to keep in mind in the county manager's office. So, Brene said, and then she gets into President Roosevelt's quote, Brene said, "There are a million cheap seats in the world today, filled with people who will never be brave with their own lives, but will spend every ounce of energy they have hurling advice and judgment at those of us who are truly daring greatly." And this is President Roosevelt's quote, "It is not the critic who counts, nor the woman who points how the strong person strumbled, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the woman who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and spends herself to a worthy cause, who at best knows the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if she fails, or at least fails while daring greatly, so that her place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." Thank you, Melissa, for daring greatly with me. I can't wait to see you defy gravity in your new role. You're going to be amazing.
Melissa, you are up.
All right. Okay. My goodness, this is a lot of emotion. Thank you so much. I'm going to read this because if I don't, I'm afraid I won't get through it, so bear with me. I will get through it. So, first, let me say this decision was not an easy one, obviously. When I imagine this moment, I always pictured myself standing here in support of my husband's retirement long before mine. But the past almost 13 years with Douglas County have been an extraordinary journey. What made it truly special wasn't just the work we accomplished, it was, like Jennifer said, the people. The county is full of some of the most passionate, dedicated individuals I have ever known, and your commitment to serving the community and its people is remarkable, and it's been a privilege to be a part of. I'll never forget the first time I drove into the Carson Valley, and as I dipped into the valley, I thought to myself how incredible it would be for this to be my new home. Over the years, this community became just that, a home for me and my family, and I brought my two sons here today because I wanted them to know that they've been a part of this journey too. Every time I was called out in the middle of the night or spent long hours in the emergency operations center, they supported our mission just as much as I did. They've been the unseen force behind my work, helping keep this community safe, resilient, and engaged. I'm almost done, I promise. I know I owe deep gratitude to so many people, to Jennifer and Scott, thank you so much for your unwavering support, belief in me and mentorship, to the incredible first responders, regional partners, engaged stakeholders, and public servants I work with. Your dedication is unmatched. It's been an honor to collaborate with you, and I am forever inspired by the work and the heart that everyone has for this community. I will also undoubtedly miss working alongside my husband. We have had so, we've been so blessed to do so many amazing things together. As I step into the next chapter, I want to leave you with one request. Always keep the community at heart of everything you do. Public engagement and connection matter deeply, deeply so much. They're the foundation of effective service, and please, never forget your PIO. And while leaving this role has been a sweet, it's not goodbye. I'm stepping into a new mission to support regional efforts in providing quality health care for our community. I'll also be reaching out to many of you for our help with Carson Tahoe's Healing Our Kids crusade. Mental and behavioral health are in crisis, not just here, but across our region and our great state. It's a challenge we can only tackle together, and I hope you will join me in this critical work. Finally, I know there are many changes and transitions happening in the county right now. Change is inevitable. It's one of the only constants in life. I encourage all of you to come together during this time, support each other, extend grace, and embrace the new faces stepping up to carry the important work that we've all dedicated ourselves to. Thank you for the time, the trust, and the collaboration we've all shared. I'm so excited for what the future holds and all that we will continue to accomplish together. Thank you.
So, Melissa, I first met Melissa when I was the admin captain, and we worked on some emergency incidents, a big flooding deal, and I noticed how well she, good she was at her job, and how the communication to the community and the residents, and letting them know the information that we wanted them to have to help keep them safe and give them some direction on what was going on was so important. When I got elected, I asked her if she would help me and the Sheriff's Office to do what she did on those incidents, and she's done that ever since. And I've had some, some big things going on, the homicides when I first was sworn in in 2019, and I don't know that I would have been able to do that on my own, to navigate the media and the messaging and stuff without her help. And so, you've been a huge service, not only to me as a sheriff and the Sheriff's Office, but to the community and to letting, to getting our message out and letting them know what the important things that they need to know to keep them safe, and to the information that I want them to have so that they're better prepared and can make decisions. So, this is just a small token of our appreciation and affection for you. You will be missed. Luckily, Ron can keep me updated on what you're doing up there. The only complaint that I have is that you're going to Carson, and I'm just not a big Carson guy, so... I'll try to get over that, but, so here you go. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Before you get out of here, Ron, would you come up along with the family so we can get a good, a nice picture of you?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Someone's on the list. Yeah. It's almost done.
Hey, Eric. Where you going? With all you guys up here, with your staff, Melissa?
Oh, yes. Please. Thank you, Scott. Go ahead. Just kidding. No, no, no. That's fine.
Oh, Ron. Ron, get in here.
You're all family. Come in. Yeah, you guys want to come down in a friend's? Right in. Come on in. Sit down here. Thank you. Scoot down a little bit so we can see Robin. Oh. You're fine. You're fine. There you go. Thanks. Thanks, guys.
If I may, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Yeah, the agreement allows Knox to use East Valley slash Fremont for deliveries within the county. That is why this ordinance does not address that because the agreement allows that, the use of that road. And also, just to clarify, the purpose isn't to restrict just trucks operating from the mine site. It's any trucks. That include Douglas's disposal, any trucks along those side streets, which will prevent, as Commissioner Gardner indicated, heavy truck traffic cutting between Johnson Lane and Stephanie and those residential neighborhoods.
I'll look forward to a full discussion when we, when we return to this and just have a genuine interest in hearing what the residents want at that time.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Erb. Sir? Be the December the 19th. Okay, we will move on to item number four, which is also for presentation only. Presentation of the 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan, the HMP, which will include an overview of the significant hazards and projects highlighted in this five-year plan. Kara Easton. And Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Kara Easton, Douglas County Director of Emergency Management. Jen's going to help us with the tech real quick. We felt it important to present our hazard mitigation plan as it is up for update and review. This plan must be reviewed and updated every five years. Thank you. So we just wanted to give you an overview before the final adoption, which we'll come back to you guys at the next board meeting on the 19th, pending any big public comment or changes from FEMA. So just brief, brief overview. So our hazard mitigation plan, the last time we updated it was in 2019. So what is mitigation? It's basically risk management actions taken to avoid, reduce, or transfer risks by reducing the impact of disasters. Every dollar invested in mitigation saves a community $6 on response. So for those of you that are unfamiliar with mitigation, a very simple example is putting a strap on your hot water heater so it doesn't fall down during an earthquake. So that's a very basic example of mitigation. So what is our plan? It's basically an analysis of the various hazards that could affect Douglas County. We look at the probability, the extent, and the impact. So probability of an earthquake is fairly low, even though we are a very seismically active state, but the impact would be very great to our community. So we go over various hazards and choose the ones that have the biggest impact to our community. We identify various actions and strategies that can be used to mitigate risks. So some of the things we look at are culverts for flooding, defensible space for wildfire, public education, just so people are aware of how they can be more better prepared. Like I said, with the, like, the strap for your hot water heater, things of that nature. Generators for our critical infrastructure, so we're able to still operate that in the event of an emergency. And then studies, which we typically don't do so much through the hazard mitigation program, but those things can be highlighted in the plan. This is not an emergency operations plan. These are all things we're doing before the emergency happens or to, obviously, try not to have the emergency impact us as much. So the ultimate goal is to reduce the loss of life and property. So our contributing partners throughout this process to update the plan, we had nine key offices through Douglas County. We did have comment from others, but they were the main players. I'm not going to read them all to you. And then our community partners, obviously, we work very closely with our fire districts. East Fork did a lot of work with this, as well as Tahoe Douglas. And then they, most of the partners on that screen will benefit from this plan, as well as all of the GIDs and special districts within Douglas County. They will be able to apply for mitigation funding because they are mentioned in this plan. And they obviously face a lot of the same disasters as the county itself, so. The changes in-
Ms. Easton, before you go, when you say, "They can apply for assistance," this is not from the county, but from FEMA? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Correct. The grant application will go to the state, yes. And we would, the county would have to help them, basically sponsor the application because we are the grantee from the state. So some of the changes, FEMA always comes out with new guidance and terminology every so often, so we had to implement that. We also ensured that we aligned this plan with a lot of our community plans that we've been updating recently. So we have the 2020 Master Plan, the 2024 Strategic Plan, the Stormwater Master Plan, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which both of our fire districts have a plan. Tahoe Douglas participates in the Lake Tahoe Basin Plan, and East Fork has their own. And then our Capital Improvement Plan. Now, not everything listed in those plans is eligible for mitigation funding, but that really helps us encapsulate everything we're trying to do within the county. Our goals and objectives include a greater focus on resilience. We did add technological and man-made hazards. Just a tidbit about the hazard mitigation plan, grant money is only available for natural disasters, but a lot of these technological and man-made hazards tie into those natural hazards, so that's why we put them in there. And then from our last plan, we completed 23 of 47 mitigation actions and then developed 52 new actions, which Tanner will get into here shortly. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
So for some of the findings of the mitigation plan, I think to no surprise wildfires, floods, and winter storms were our top three hazards that we identified. We've ranked these all based off of location, extent, probability, and then just concern amongst the general public and county staff for these hazards. We've added seven new as well. Thunderstorms and lightning, extreme heat, straight-line winds, landslide infestation, and seashes as well as new hazards.
I, can you take questions?
Yes.
Of course.
That last thing, I didn't even know how to say that word, and I had to look it up. So maybe you could pause on that.
Yeah, so a seish or a saish?
Saish.
So that's basically a wind-driven wave, almost like a small-scale tsunami. So like Lake Tahoe or Top has like earthquakes, or heavy winds could cause these waves to come onto shore and damage infrastructure or people.
We're going to test you next time. We'll test you next time, Charlotte.
And for our technological hazards, we identified flash flooding along irrigation ditches and canals. The state hazard mitigation plan identifies that as a technological hazard, so we did as well. We also identified utility failures, planned shut-offs, hazardous materials incidents, and dam failures.
I just want to jump in on this real quick. So we talked about technological hazards not being eligible for mitigation money. However, as we know, with NV Energy, we've had a lot of planned power outages with winds, and they relate it to wildfire problems. So we are actually working with NV Energy to try to bury the, the power lines in our Genoa area, because that's the one that gets shut off the most. And so because we can use it as a wildfire mitigation, that's how we are able to potentially get money. Don't, don't, don't count that in as getting it, but that's something we're looking into, and NV Energy would help foot the bill on the grant match that the county would have to have if we were to do that project. So those are things we can partner with our private sector on and get funding, and then also tailor it to that man, or sorry, natural disaster, even though it would take care of a technological hazard as well.
All right. And then for our human-caused or intentional hazards, the top four that we identified were cyber attacks through ransomware, an active shooter incident, cyber attacks through SCADA, which is supervisory control access and data acquisition for utility lines and infrastructure, and then terrorism as well. So we identified 74 total mitigation actions across five goal areas of the plan, which are to protect lives, property, and the natural environment, promote disaster-resilient development, increase public awareness of local hazards, build partnerships and implementation, and then strengthen emergency services capability. So we've updated these goals from the previous plan to align with the strategic plan as well, so those efforts are aligned. So for the financial impacts of this plan, the hazard mitigation plan is required for entities within the county to be eligible for FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grants. So for public assistance, categories C through G, which is infrastructure repairs, roads, bridges, water control facilities, public buildings, as along with hazard mitigation grants, post-fire grants, there's at least 10 different that fall under that umbrella that we need this plan to be eligible for. The county has spent approximately $3.2 million since 2019 on mitigation projects, and we have about $2 million in submitted grant applications for 2024 Hazard Mitigation Grant Programs.
What's your anticipated, do you have any anticipated, you've submitted $2 million, what's your anticipation of being able to successfully get that?
So right now with FEMA, the, their review process takes quite a long time. It's usually an EHP, so environmental and historic preservation. So that's where all those grant applications for the $2 million are. If we get them, the county will have to match 25% of that, and that total would be $505,000 approximately out of county funding, and the rest would be covered by the grants.
So the $3 million has been spent on mitigation projects. That's by the county?
So the $3 million between 2019 and now, only $183,000 was grant money. And so the two projects that we got hazard mitigation grant funds were for a generator at the animal shelter and then to hire a contractor to help us update this plan. So it was only $183,000 out of 3.2 million.
So are these grant applications annual opportunities?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. And then, so lastly, we have to open the plan up for public comment for 30 days once we're done updating it. We opened our public comment period on November 15th. A press release went out, and it will close on December 14th. It is available on our Douglas County website under the Emergency Management Department. There's a link to the new plan, as well as last year, or the last iteration of the plan if people want to compare. And so, well, if you'd like to read 500 pages and comment, we welcome your feedback. And then, like I said, pending any public comment, we will be bringing this back to the board on December 19th for adoption. And if you have any more questions, we welcome them.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? Seeing none. This is for presentation only. We thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. And we will move on to item number five. This is for possible action. Discussion to authorize the purchase of three mobile bleacher units for the Douglas County Fairgrounds from Century Industries in the amount of $353,319. Brooke Adi and Ryan Stanton.
Good morning. Brooke Adi, Community Services Director. I'm here with Ryan Stanton, Deputy Director for the Community Services Department, to talk about a cool project that we're working on. I'm going to let Ryan go ahead and start the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission. Again, Ryan Stanton, Deputy Director of Community Services. I'm here to present the proposed purchase of some mobile bleachers for the Fairgrounds facility. This was a prioritized project by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and also approved through the Capital Improvement Plan in our current year budget. The budget for this project was $400,000, again, in the CIP. Actual cost for the three mobile bleachers is 300,053, or excuse me, 353,913, 319. We've utilized a cooperative purchasing agreement through Houston Galveston Area Council, and with this purchase, we're purchasing two 12-row elevated grandstand bleachers and one ADA accessible grandstand. And we will added an additional 964 seats to the Fairgrounds. The existing grandstands, as they are today, seat about 1,500 people, so we're adding just about 1,000 more seats to the Fairgrounds facility. This is a picture of the mobile grandstands that we proposed to purchase today here at the board. Again, there are 12 rows. That particular picture right there, you see, that'll sit 330 people comfortably with a access ingress egress walk path in the front. Two of those, and then this slide that you see here, this is our ADA provision bleacher grandstand. On the right hand, the center photo, on the right-hand side of the photo, you'll see the ADA ramp that will go up to the walk, walking path in front of the grandstands. And you'll see our three different areas with two seats apiece, which will be accessible for ADA seating. Fairgrounds events, that will benefit from this event is the Douglas County Rodeo. We're coming up on the fifth year of that rodeo. Carson Valley Roping Club has been out there as long as I've worked here, probably 25, 30 years. Our sheriff, Dan Coverley, is a photo credit in there. And there's several other events. I wrote some notes as to some other events that will benefit from this purchase. The Douglas County Ag Fair and Demolition Derby, the Truck Pools, Monster Trucks, and several others. I think once the word gets out that we have more seating, we're going to get more and more events. In the next slide, not only will this benefit the Douglas County Fairgrounds, but it will benefit other events within the county. Carson Valley Days, for example, either at the park or during the parade, these could be utilized. Hot Air for Hope. Stotoc Park is home of the Douglas County Pop Warner, and we have out there currently five-row bleachers that seat very minimal folks. These bleachers could be utilized and hauled out and could sit pretty much all the parents elevated and could have a better view of the game. Concerts in the park, the Coffin Races, Heritage Days, Dia de los Muertos, the Candy Dance, the Tahoe Summit even, wherever that is located. I know that changes year to year. And then we have special events at KAL Community Center, such as Easter egg hunt. I know in the past, we've hosted concerts and such, so a lot of different ideas as to how to use these bleachers as well, just not the Fairgrounds.
Are you taking questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just trying to picture how you, aren't these too wide to just, I mean, I saw a, like a trailer hitch kind of hookup, but how do these get from one place to another?
So you can tow them. They're about 40 feet long, and once they're built, they actually will be driven from back east to Douglas County, delivered. So our, the Parks Works trucks are fully capable of hooking these, these bleachers up and hauling them to where they need to be. Because these, again, these are mobile bleachers, so they won't be out in the Fairgrounds arenas during a weekly use. It would be driven as far as the event goes.
So when they're driven, they're-
They've kind of fold.
They go like this?
Yeah, I guess I put a, probably should have linked in like a YouTube video, but they're like hydraulic-driven, and they kind of fold into an accordion almost.
So how high are they when they're being driven?
I don't, I don't know that answer when, when they're being rolled down the road. When we get them, I'd love to bring them out here for one of our county commissioners' meetings and set them up.
I'd love to see it. Maybe we could have an outdoor meeting sometime.
There we go.
Please don't get in front of me hauling that thing up Kingsbury.
We'll go up Highway 50.
The trucks are bad enough.
We should have them by then. Lastly, this meets our strategic plan goal and initiative by increasing opportunities and access for residents of all ages and abilities to enjoy outdoor recreation in Douglas County. And again, this photo is taken actually by Musco Sports Lighting. They did an improvement to our Fairgrounds facility with LED lighting about three years ago, and this was a drone photo taken from our, just the last Douglas County rodeo. So with that, I will answer any questions you guys may have.
Can you put that back up? Where do you think these would be most likely to be situated at the, at the Fairgrounds?
So if Brooke has her cursor kind of between, yeah, where that white tent is, that was currently the area where this particular event had like a VIP seating area. We proposed one bleacher to be set over there. And then the ADA bleacher, I know it's kind of hard to see her cursor, but between the bathroom building and the grandstands in the arena, we would kind of set it up sideways because, so we're kind of creating like a horseshoe for the view. And that's the, we find that area to be the best for ADA access. So we would place our ADA bleacher at that location.
What do you mean sideways?
Just kind of at an angle. So it would point from kind of the, the corner of the grandstands, closest to the arena, towards the roping box, if that makes sense. Sorry about that. Yeah. And then the other one, it could be proposed to actually put it in the actual arena, either on the south side or on the north side. Again, there would be, have to be some paneling put up and some access for our spectators. But that, those are the three areas that we propose.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none. This is an action item, and we will open to public comment. Is there any public comment on item number five? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair. So anyways, I, I, I'm really excited about this. We have recognized over the last, I mean, it's been exciting to have our rodeo start up again, and I know that we have a lack of capacity out there now, and, and that's why we have had, obviously, the promoters and the event, and other events have recognized this, this tremendous need. And I'm so pleased that the Parks and Rec Commission also recognized this need and brought it forward in their CIP plan. So, and it's nice also that it's coming under, coming in under budget. So, so that's great. And, and then the portability is just really, really an exciting aspect of it, and the ability to, to, you know, use it in other venues or in other places in the county while it's, while, while we don't have, you know, an event going on at the Fairgrounds that utilizes those, the ability to do that is, is exceptional also. So I'm really excited about this, and if other commissioners want to chime in, but I am prepared to make a motion at this time if not.
If you would, do you have a comment?
Oh, I, I just want to say how cool this is, and I totally agree, and bring us more of this kind of attention.
Yeah. Okay. So at this time, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I move that we authorize the purchase of three mobile bleacher units for the Douglas County Fairgrounds from Century Industries in the amount of $353,319, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And with that, we are going to take our lunch break, and we will return at 1 o'clock, where we will hear item number six.
Let's do seven.
And seven.
Yeah. Can we do seven before six?
We can. All right. We are in recess. Okay, if we'd come back to order, we have reached the one o'clock hour. Thank you. Since most of the people in this building are here for item seven and eight, we will take item number six after we complete item number eight. So, item number seven. For possible action, discussion of an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve Development Application DP 24-0170, a design review to replace an existing monopole cell tower at 1450 Stephanie Way within the Johnson Lane community with a new 80-foot monopole cell tower and associated network equipment. The equipment will be located within a 30-foot by 30-foot fenced area and will include network cabinets and a standby diesel generator. The subject property is located in the Public Facility PF zoning district within the Johnson Lane Community Plan. The applicants are Casey Rogers, Patricia French, Brian and Yvonne Stevens, and David Magnato. The applicant's representative is W. Scott McCullough Esquire, APN 1420-27-401-011. This is Development Application DP 24-0202. Linda Doherty will be representing the county. All right, before we get started, I would like to provide the board and the public with an overview and an outline on how I will conduct this appeal hearing. For this item, the board must first determine whether the applicants have standing and then whether the appeal should be granted. The basis for the appellant's, appellate's standing is set forth in Section A of the justification letter, and I will give each of them an opportunity to explain why they believe that they have standing. Once it's determined by the board which of any of the applicants have standing, the applicants will be given an, an opportunity to state their reasons for the appeal. Reasonable time limits may be placed on, at the discretion of the chair on their presentation. I will then turn over to the board for questions. Immediately following that period of questions, the project applicant Epic Wireless on behalf of Verizon Wireless and county staff on behalf of the Planning Commission will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, reasonable time limits may be placed on the discretion of the chair on their presentations. Both the applicants and the project applicant will be given a reasonable amount of time to make their presentations. I will then return it to, to the board for questions. Finally, before the board takes action on either affirm, modify, or reverse the decision, the board will hear, hear public comment. Are there any questions from the board?
Not a question, but just a small point. A couple of times when you said applicant, I think you actually meant appellate, just to, to clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's get started. The first thing we're going to do is determine standing. I'd like to invite the applicants, Casey Rogers.
Appellants.
The appellants, I did it again. The appellants, Casey Rogers, Patricia French, Brian and Yvonne Stevens, and David Magnato, to please rise and approach the podium to introduce yourself. And will each of you please state your name for the record and why you believe you have standing to challenge the decision of the Planning Commission?
May I go first, please? My name is Scott McCullough, I'm representative for the, the appellate here.
Counsel?
Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. At this point, the appellants need to be able to state who they are and why they think they have standing. As far as the actual arguments for the appeal, that will come after that.
I understand. I wanted to raise a procedural point, however, if I may, if I may be allowed the privilege of doing that.
If you could state who you are and...
Yes, I will. My name is Scott McCullough, I'm the representative of the appellate in item number seven. I rise to raise a procedural point only. We understand that there's been a continuance requested in item eight, the other cell tower matter before you. We do not, we have not had an opportunity to see that actual request. We do not know whether it has been decided yet. I would like to state our position on that. Our position is we would oppose the continuance on that item, but if it is granted, we believe that this item, item seven, should also be continued. These two cell towers have very common issues of fact and law, and they also relate to the question of significant gap of coverage and what the alternatives are. And so we firmly believe that they need to be heard together. We're prepared to go forward with our case today, but if you are going to continue eight, we ask that you also continue seven. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may. Again, Doug Ritchie, for the record, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. To be clear, this is item number seven.
Yes.
Not number eight. If the appellants wish to request a continuance of their appeal, they can do so at this time, but the items are not, they're not the same item.
I, I understand that they are not the same item, and I also understand that we are not formal parties to the other, although we have weighed in to the other. It is simply that we firmly believe these two need to be decided together. They relate to each other very much. You should not be, in our opinion, our respectful opinion, deciding one on a different day than you are deciding the other. And so our, our position is they should be heard concurrently, and we request that that be the case. If you are going to hear eight today, great, let's go forward. If you are not going to hear eight today, I think both need to be put off, and we would request a continuance if you are going to grant a continuance in eight.
Mr. Chair, I, I would ask clarification.
Go ahead, sir.
Has item eight actually been requested by the proposer here to be continued to a later date? Is that...
Yes, they have requested that.
Okay. So what, I guess what this gentleman, as I understand it, is asking is, is if it has in fact been pulled, then the appellants on item seven would then suggest that they would ask for a continuance as well? Is that...
That's correct.
Is that what I understand?
Contingent on whether you grant the one on eight.
Again, if, if I may, the appellants need to establish that they have standing before they, before you do anything substantive on the appeal itself. So my recommendation to the board is to do as the chair has requested, procedurally go through, have the appellants, not some third party, but the appellants actually state who they are and in their own words, why they think they have standing. It doesn't require a lot of FCC regulations or case law to establish why they, they are harmed under our county code. And so at a fundamental level, before there's a request for continuance, there needs to be established, do they have the right to even be speaking? Now again, everyone in this room will have a chance to speak during public comment. The question though, is their standing as an appellate on this particular item.
Understand that, and we can certainly address that, but when we get to the merits, we are very, very insistent that these two should be decided together. We'll be happy to go forward with our standing.
May I ask, may I ask two questions?
Yes, sir.
Sir, are you an attorney?
I am.
Are you admitted before the State Bar of Nevada?
I am not.
Thank you. So if we would have the appellants, and we'll start with Casey Rogers.
Casey Rogers for the record. The reason I feel that I have standing is I am one straight away from where this tower is going to be placed. The aesthetics that I will be able to see from my home is affecting me straight through my front porch window and from my front porch view. I have been a part of this group since the beginning because of these reasons. I am concerned about the property values of my home as I believe that people will not be purchasing, if I choose to sell my home, next to a cellular tower. I feel that it will decrease what I would be getting if that was to happen. We've had research done by three different realtors and one of them being a broker. People don't want to live next to towers, and they have stated that and showed you guys that in letters. The fire safety is also a concern for me as I am one straight away, and I feel that there is not adequate attention that can come from the fire department. This always takes them a long time to get out there. I'm concerned about not being able to get out if there was a fire to ever occur from a tower. There's a lot of dry brush, sticker brushes and grass, and that also concerns me when it comes to fire safety. These are the reasons, and also I have been speaking in public comment this entire time. So therefore, the last times, every time I have spoke, I have been here fighting against that exact tower going near my home. That's why I believe I have standing.
Thank you. Patricia French.
Katrina French, thank you. You guys all know me, been here 43 years, have property out in Johnson Lane. We bought that piece of property 14 years ago. We grow garden, we have bees, we have fruit trees, chickens, all of which are organic. I try to take care of my health as best as I can. I'm a grandma now. I don't want this tower right off of Stephanie, right across from Pinion Elementary. It's a fire hazard. It's an aesthetic issue. It's so peaceful out there. And every day we're outside tending to our bees and chickens and fruit trees, and we share our bounty with people that also care. The proposed 80-foot cell tower, or tower, at Station Six is directly across from Pinion Elementary. Those children, if a fire happens, how are they going to get out safely? We have so much open space. I have standing because of the aesthetics and because of my property value. We have three realtors, one is a broker, Carolyn Harris, Vanetta Hale, and Tia Elges. All have written you letters, you all have those letters, that it will affect property value. Nobody wants to live next to a 5G tower. It's ugly. And had we known 14 years ago that this was going to happen, we would have never bought that house. And we've brought it up to date, lot of blood, sweat and tears. I happen to be sensitive to the EMF, and maybe not everybody is, but I sure am. I can feel it. I'm not saying that we're going to get this on health effects. This is not about health. This is about property value, aesthetics, and fire. All that sagebrush out of there. The other thing I wanted to say, through elimination, thorough elimination of these towers needs to be taken into consideration before informed decision is made. And I know you guys have all kinds of information and facts that we have sent you since January. Our notebook is four inches thick, studies. So we just appreciate you today and hopefully you do your due diligence. Thank you. And I need to sign in.
Brian and Yvonne Stevens?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Stevens, and I'm one of the appellants speaking on behalf of Amendment for Safe Technology. My wife and I own the property within the notice, notification radius of the project. One of the biggest reasons we chose to buy our home on Gorburn Avenue is the beautiful little park on Stephanie Lane. This park is more than just open space. This park is more than just open space. It's a central part of our community where we walk our dog, enjoy nature and bring our children when they visit. It's a peaceful and special place for us and for so many of our neighbors. The proposed 80-foot self-out, cell tower would permanently alter this park. Its massive industrial presence would overshadow the natural beauty of the park and make it far less inviting for families, children and the community as a whole. Adding a diesel generator with its noise and unattractive design would further disrupt the park's tranquility and charm. Together, these elements would take away everything that makes the park valuable and a beloved part of our neighborhood. The development code requires a finding of consistency with the master plan and the Johnson Lane Community Plan. This proposed tower would not be consistent with either. First, it does not preserve the rural character. Second, it would destroy scenic views. It is a commercial development that does not blend in with our community's residential character. And third, as others have noticed, it would reduce property values and increase fire risks. The park's aesthetic and community value will be lost, and the neighborhood will be left with a permanent structure that diminishes its charm and appeal. On behalf of our community, we urge the commission to deny this project and protect the spaces and values that make our neighborhood so special. As a Verizon customer, we don't experience any issues with coverage in this area, which reinforces the argument in our supplemental filing that Verizon should focus on upgrading equipment at their existing sites, rather than constructing a new unnecessary tower that would harm our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yvonne, did you want to say anything?
No, he spoke for me.
Okay. All right. Next, I would ask for David Magnato, am I saying that properly?
Magnata.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? Good afternoon. My name is David Magnata. I received the letter from the planning board, because I'm four houses away from where this is being proposed. And like I said, you know, I came there and spoke, coming here to speak. I totally object to this tower being there, being put there. And like I said, that's why I'm here, as an appellant on this. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I could close very briefly on this. Ma'am?
Are you making legal argument? What is?
Yes, I wish to present legal argument on the standing question.
Okay.
All right, sir.
First of all, I will direct you to the staff response with regard to standing. The staff response acknowledges that David Magnota and the two Stevens have standing. They're within the notice radius. They all provided comments before the planning board. I acknowledge that the staff report challenges the standing of the other two appellant's. We tend to disagree. But generally in standing law, if you have a group of plaintiffs and you do have some withstanding, then it's basically over. And so, I would urge you to, you know, make whatever finding you need to on the individual appellant's. But you have at least two before you withstanding on all questions. And so, ruling out two isn't going to make this issue go away. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Again, without going to the substance of the merit of the appeal, the question is, is who has standing to appeal? If it sounds as if you're acknowledging, or at least not contesting, that not all of the appellant's actually have standing under the county code, but notwithstanding that, you think the appeal should go forward based on those who, who may actually have standing?
No, I, I think all of us have standing, and I think that the other two that are not within the notice radius have, first of all, established that they participated below, and second, have shown a special injury. They submitted an affidavit showing how this would impact them in ways that are more particularized and direct than the general public. This still is relatively close to them. It will directly affect their aesthetic views. It will affect their property values, and therefore, they have a special injury.
I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments from the board?
I was going to say, I think they have standing. I don't think it's in dispute, so.
I need all five.
Just do another motion, please, sir.
I'm sorry?
I'll spread a motion, please, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion as who to accept and who not to accept?
I'll jump in here. For sure, Brian and Yvonne Stevens and David Magnata have standing. The other two, under our county code, they have standing if they have participated previously in this matter in public comment, and that certainly have been very good advocates of their position, and so that's established. They either, they also need to show either a special or peculiar injury not suffered by other members of the public. And I don't think we have that here, because everyone else who has property in the area of these two would have the same impact. Or they hold an adverse and substantial property right that may be affected by the decision. And I guess that one is maybe more up to, up to debate. But perhaps to make this expedited, I could move that we find that Brian, Yvonne, and Yvonne Stevens and David Magnata have standing, and we could agree on that and make that motion, and then we could figure out what to do with the other two. So, I will, I will make that motion.
I will second that, but I was prepared to suggest that all four applicants, appellant's have, have standing. So, if you're, if you're good with that, then I can amend the motion to.
I'm not, I, I'm not sure they meet that.
Okay. I, I feel like they do, but I'll second that. We'll pass that motion and then, or hopefully pass that motion, I suppose. I can't speak for my other commissioners, but anyways, I'll second that, and then we can discuss the others, I guess.
Okay. I need input from Mr. Nosen.
The only, excuse me, my voice is going. The only input I have is that this process, that the individual people who are affected by this go-through are all based in FCC rules. And it's OTARD. And anybody who is against a, a cell tower in their area, for whatever reason, falls within that OTARD thing. So, I'm thinking that the best thing that can happen here would be to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on a motion, is to have a group formed to petition the FCC to get their act together. I don't care about standing. I think anybody who lives in this county, for which we are responsible for the health and welfare, has standing.
I would ask the audience to refrain themselves. All right, we've heard from the board. The motion on the floor is to accept the first three, to have standing, to be, I have too many pieces of paper up here. That have standing would be Brian and Yvonne Stevens and David, and I'm not going to try it again, Magnato. I did try it again, but I'm, I'm close. And that is the question. And now, we have to open it to public comment at this point?
No, it's a question of law.
You can ask, have, open the public comment. It's a technical issue regarding our county code, though, but you could open it up for public comment.
Does he have to?
Yeah, limited to standing, though.
Yeah, the comments must be only regarding standing, not your microwave in your kitchen or anything else. So, this only has to do with standing.
Good evening, good afternoon, Chair Rice, members of the commission. My name's Paul Aldbritton. I'm outside counsel for Verizon Marilis, and I have our Nevada counsel with us as well. I have been accepted pro hoc v. to appear in Nevada. We have no objections to the motion for standing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, you know, before you're going to march everybody up here, I think it's pretty clear that everybody up here, at least you're the only one who hasn't indicated, at least four of us feel they have standing. So, unless you guys want to beat a dead horse, that's where we're at.
In that case, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have four to one approving the motion. Do we have a second motion?
Generally, we have a motion. We listen to public comment in advance of having a motion and a second. And we kind of broke in a little protocol in that regard. But anyways, I, I agree with, anyways, Commissioner Tarkanian and, and perhaps even Commissioner Noah Sad, that I believe all these folks have, have standing. And so, therefore, I would make a motion to also give the process of standing to Casey Rogers and also to Katrina French, the two that weren't previously in that.
And I'll second.
I'll second. Okay, do I need to go to public comment on that motion? Okay. In that case, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. We have three noes. Motion does not pass. Now.
Can I?
Sir?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office, just for the record. So, the appeal will go forward. There will be three appellant's that are recognized that have standing. The other two are free to continue to participate, but it'll be during public comment as any other interested citizen of the county. So, just to be clear, the appeal will go forward. There are three appellant's that their standing has been recognized.
Thank you. My question now is, do your clients wish to continue today, or do they wish to withdraw their motion for today and move it to another date?
As I indicated, we believe that both item seven and item eight need to be heard on the same day, because there's significantly overlapping issues of fact and law. Each relates to the other. Now, we are prepared to go forward with ours today, and we also have public comment that we intend to submit at the appropriate time, should you hear eight. But we believe that if you are going to continue eight, then you should also, and we move, contingent on your vote of eight, to also continue seven.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I'll make a motion to continue seven, as requested by the appellant. Is that right?
Sure. Whatever.
Whatever your position is, the people that are appealing. Okay. And again, I, it's contingent upon the continuance of eight, but the continuance of eight has already been requested. And it's my understanding that that's going to, I guess, I don't, can I say, my understanding's going to, no, I can't say anything?
No.
All right. I will tell you, I agree with what you said, and my motion is to continue it with you guys, with, with seven.
Chairman, chairman, if I may.
Sir.
So, now, we're on the second part of this. Public comment should be taken, because this is the substance, this is the substance of the appeal. Moreover, before a continuance can be granted, staff, and particularly staff counsel, may want to inform you of some of the rights that Verizon has under federal law before a continuance is granted by this body. So, if you may, if, with the chairman's indulgence, before a motion is made, there has to be at least public comment, and there needs to be some input from staff.
So, this is the same for eight. So, when Verizon gets up and says they want a continuance, you want public comment. It's not the substance of what we're talking, we won't be hearing the substance of the argument, because it's going to be continued. So, I have no idea why you think we would have to have public comment on that. I certainly think it's important to hear from the staff on what those issues are that Verizon has. But I don't, I think if you could, look, they got 50 people here in public comment, and this matter's not going to be heard today, why go through that?
If I may, Chair, because the item was agendized and it's been read into the record, the public has, they showed up, they have the right to be heard, even if the item's going to be continued.
So, we pulled an item off the. I'm sorry, were you going to say something? Go ahead. I'm sorry. On yours now.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Tarkanian. My concern is that if the appellant's pull item seven, as they've indicated their desire is to do, and then, and then item eight is not pulled for continuance, that has, that has put us into another quandary. And so, I want to make sure that, that, that before we approve a continuance of item seven, we are assured that item eight is also going to be pulled for a continuance.
Chairman, may, may staff address the, the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A.J. Haines from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. So, the, as, as we've already noted during this discussion, cell towers are, are regulated by federal law. And one of the laws that comes into play is what's, it's commonly called the shot clock. So, federal law requires that when a county receives an application, it must take action on that application, either approve it or deny it within a set period of time. And if the county fails to take action within a set period of time, then it's deemed approved, essentially. So, the, the issue here is that Verizon has submitted their application, and they are, we've now reached the end of that shot clock period. I don't remember the specific day, but I think it's this week.
Yeah, I want to say it's, yeah, I think like the ninth, I want to say.
Yeah, maybe it's Monday. But, so, one issue is if, if there is going to be a continuance of this item, it would need to be with the consent, essentially, of Verizon. Absent their consent, I think case law and the shot clock seems to lean in favor of the telecommunications company. And so, I just don't want the county to get into a position where we think we're continuing something, but we're effectively approving it because we've, we violated that shot clock time period. So, any, any motion to continue should just, you should keep that in mind.
Are we under the same shot clock as for the item number eight?
Yes, but Verizon, in their written request for continuance that was submitted via email yesterday, they did acknowledge that they would waive the shot clock until, I believe, April 3rd. So, one possible way to approach this would be to cease discussion on item seven, and I'm sure Mr. Ritchie will interject if I'm getting this mixed up, but postpone further deliberation on item seven, proceed to item eight, and then come back to item seven following the conclusion of item eight. And then, one thing that the board might do during item eight is you could seek to have Verizon approve the continuance of item seven as a possible condition of their own request for a continuance.
Counsel, is that possible?
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Yes, that's possible. As indicated in the agenda, the board may take items in any order and change the order based on the effective administration. and change the order based on the effective administration of this agenda. I, I would also note that legal counsel for the appellants on this item has asserted that there are similar factual and, legal and factual assertions, I guess. Items that are similar between the two. And if the board hears 8, that'll give the appellants a chance to articulate why they think these different agenda items with two different cell towers in different locations are factually similar, as well as, of course, any legal arguments they may want to make.
May I speak very quickly to the shot clock issue?
Before you do that, sir.
Yes.
My question is, is there any way that we can get in contact with Verizon to get them? Ah ha. All right, counsel.
Chair of Vice, members of the Commission, my name is Paul Albritton. I'm outside counsel for Verizon, and we really appreciate your time today. We've been given authority to extend the shot clock on Item 8, and we conveyed that to you in writing yesterday. I do not have authority to extend the shot clock on Item 7 at this time. And we would object to reversing the agenda items and feel that Item 7 can be heard. These facilities are over three miles apart. With respect to your land use decision, the land use decision that you're making today on a major design review permit, there's no relation of issues between these two facilities that are three miles apart. And we should proceed with Item 7.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, that answered that question. Yes, sir.
May I just be heard on one small item on the shot clock issue?
No, no. I wanna make a comment. If, you know, we're trying to work together and create a solution that's gonna be best for what's required under federal law, what's best for Verizon, and what's best for our residents. And we've been working hard to try to get this accomplished. I have separately and with, and, and so forth. If Verizon's gonna take this kind of position, don't expect us to be reasonable with you. It's, it's, that's the way it works. You can't ask to have us cooperate with you and then state you're not gonna give in to a reasonable request. That's my, that's my position.
Counsel, how do we proceed from this point?
Chairman, if I, if legal counsel, I would, my recommendation would be to allow legal counsel for the appellants on this agenda item to articulate his opinion on the shot clock. I think that's what he's gonna speak on. And then the board can decide what it wants to do. Notwithstanding, the arguments have been made. It's very clear under Nevada's open meeting law and the agenda as published. This board can continue both items. They can reorder the items. You can do whatever you think is most efficient to get through these two very important agenda items.
Mr. Chair.
Before, my question for you is, if we do continue Item number 7, will that automatically mean that we have approved Number 7?
Well, I, we haven't heard from the appellant's attorney on his view on it, but our view is that, yeah, without, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, yeah. The Verizon's indicated they will not waive the, the shot clock. And if the FCC requires that a decision be made within the shot clock, if you continue at past that time, you may have given up your right to deny. You may be bound by federal regulations.
The pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I, I share Commissioner Tarkanian's feelings on this. You know, and I gotta say that I, I have been a loyal Verizon customer for as long as they've been cell phones. But the point is, and I agree with Commissioner Tarkanian, is that he's, they're asking for us to continue Item 8, okay? But unwilling to continue Item 7. So we can choose as a board not to grant their continuation of Item 8 and make them produce that today because they don't wanna give in to postponing both of these items for a later date. And, and that, 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 quite frankly, that disappoints me. Mr. Counsel.
If I may, Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon. I think what I said quite clearly is that I don't have authority to extend that shot clock. I can try and reach Verizon and get authority to extend that shot clock. I don't have that right now. Again, these are land use applications that are three miles apart. Perhaps we should have a discussion of, if you want it, what is the relationship between these that would prevent you from moving forward with one and another? This has been a dance. I'm sure you've noticed that we had asked for additional time from the November 7th date to December 5th. Subsequently, appellants asked to have their item moved from November 7th to December 5th. And so we have been in contact. We've been trying to communicate with the community and with all of you. There's some ideas for alternatives to our proposed site, we call the high school site. And so we'd like to investigate those. We'd like to pay attention to what you've said, take four months, step back, see if we can find a location that's preferred. With respect to this other site, it was approved, recommended by staff, approved by the planning commission. It's needed infrastructure for your community, for your emergency services, and we need to move forward. This, we've been in this process for over two years, and it takes, it'll be another year before that tower is built because of all of the construction drawings and reviews and environmental reviews that have to happen before that tower is built. So that's the reason there's a sense of urgency. Now, if it's your position that you need to continue both, I need to take a recess and contact my client and see if I can get an extension of that shot clock. But I do not, it goes through levels at Verizon, and I would have to do that, so.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
You know, that raises some questions in my mind. You say you've been in this process for two years.
Yes.
Is that right? And you're just now deciding you need to look at alternative locations? Is that what you're saying?
We believe we have the most, the best, least intrusive alternative under federal law.
But, but you're just now listening to our residents concerned about the locations? You're just now? That's what you basically said? Am I mistaken? Did I hear something wrong?
Yes. We have been working with residents, yes. But we've also been working with you all and the staff and others. We believe we have the least intrusive location, but there have been new locations recommended. There have been a suggestion that we would, might get assistance in having some of these, the landlords who've been unwilling so far to help us. And these are the sorts of things that we're willing to work with. We have evidence on the record for each of the 20 alternatives that we looked for for why we were turned away or unable to use those facilities. So we're trying to work with you and work with the county to come up with the best solution. But we believe the best solution has been identified and approved by the planning commission for Item 7. I see the Verizon's, Yvonne Pinto is an employee of Verizon Marilis with their municipal engagement. And when clients then steps up, I step down. So I'll later speak.
Counsel, if you are willing, we will take a 15-minute break to try to give you time to contact Verizon to see if they are willing to put this off to a later date.
Thank you, sir. And I'm understanding with that, then, that you believe there's a consensus amongst the board that these are tied as opposed to being separate land use considerations?
No, sir. We're, we're not willing to do that. But we will take a 15-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if we could come back to order. Thank you all. Commissioner knows that, thank you. Okay, we'll bring this back to order. Before we go back to our debate and go to the attorneys, we have more suits in this room than I've seen in a long time. Both of our attorneys would like to address the court. I'll start with you and then we'll go to you, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A.J. Hames for the record. I did just want to clarify a statement I made before about the shot clock. I implied that it was an automatic approval. It's actually a court approval. So if the county were to violate the shot clock, then what Verizon would do is they would go to a court and seek a court's order essentially stating that we did violate the shot clock and that the application is approved. We would have an opportunity to defend our delay, but based upon the circumstances, my advice would be to not, still not delay and violate that shot clock absent some approval and consent from Verizon.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. For the record, I wanted to let the public know that a quorum of the Board of County Commissioners did meet with legal counsel during the break. We did discuss procedural issues and legal questions regarding some of the arguments that have been raised. I also want to inform the public that Council Verizon has notified me that they have been able to speak to the appropriate corporate officer and they may have an update for the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Counsel.
Mr. Chair, I also have a point of clarification. The reason that I wanted to delay seven as well as eight was simply because in eight, it's indicated that Verizon has indicated to us that they wish to have some time, and I believe the date was stated April 3rd, in order to research possible other sites for their application, DP in item eight. And I can tell you that the reason I would like item seven to be postponed as well is because I have visited that site out on Stephanie Lane and I believe, as a commissioner, that there are more appropriate sites in that area that Verizon should also consider, okay? And so that's why I wanted item seven to be postponed, is to give Verizon an opportunity also to explore possible other sites out in that area as well, okay? And so that's why I've asked Verizon to postpone item seven also until that date.
Thank you. Verizon, the ball's in your court.
Sorry, I were Verizon, but I'm not. I did, I called six executives to finally get through to somebody. We do believe these are distinct and we do believe that this is imperative service for the community, including particularly your emergency services and fire department. But Verizon Marlis will agree to extend, to continue both items until April 3rd. Since we've had limited time at the podium, I just want to say that under Ninth Circuit interpretations of the federal law, if we were to address these issues in a court of law, we would argue that there was a gap in service and I think we've well established that in the materials. My phone's ringing, it's very funny. And then secondly, we found the least intrusive alternative for the facility based on the goals represented in your area plans and so forth. We believe we did that. If we failed to do that and the county believes that there's a less intrusive feasible alternative to provide the coverage that we need, then under the Anacortes case, we should be provided an opportunity to review those and tell you, yes, you did it, you found another place, or you didn't. So if indeed there are ideas regarding the alternate site that's subject of this appeal on item seven, please let us know. We'll work with you and try and work with best, as best we can with the community. Verizon really doesn't come to communities to try and traumatize them and bring angry people into a room. We're trying to provide a very important service to our customers and to the community. And so we do want to work with you and Verizon will agree to the continuance. Unless you have any other questions, I'll sit down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Yes. And then we will go to public comment. Counsel, you're up.
Well, I believe if I heard correctly that Verizon is willing to extend the shot clock for the item number seven. Therefore, our motion is that you continue both items till April, until sometime before April 3rd when the new shot clock would expire.
I think you have to be a Douglas County Red.
So with that.
All right, for those that are waiting with bated breath, we're going to go ahead and read number eight into the record and then we'll take comment, public comment on both seven and eight at the same time. And you only get to talk once. And if the guy in front of you said what you were going to say, ditto works real well. Otherwise, we'll be here until tomorrow. All right. So should we go ahead and? All right, I will read number eight into the record if I can find the darn thing. All right. So I will read number eight into the record. For possible action. Discussion on an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to delay development application, DP 24-0169, a design review to install a new 80-foot monopole cell tower and associated network equipment at 1699 County Road within the town of Mindon. The equipment will be located within a 15-by-25-foot fenced area and will include network cabinets and a standby diesel generator. The subject property is located in a public facility, PF zoning district within Mindon Community Plan. The appellant, I said it right this time, is wireless, Verizon Wireless, I booed that one, a Ginbar Kameta. Not even going to try that one. The appellant's representative is Epic Wireless, Chris Hatch. Thank you for the easy name. Development application, DP 24-0204. Then DeDordy would be the one speaking, who is probably not going to be speaking. And now we will go to public comment. Please, your time is limited to three minutes of comment and as I said, ditto works.
Hi, my name is Erica Adams and I am one of the owners of Dance Workshop. My husband and I moved here to own the building. We bought the building from the old owner and it's a 5,000-square-foot commercial building on 1697 County Road. We have 250 children that attend our dance studio and we're mostly worried about our property value, obviously, and losing business because that will massively affect me and my family as that is our sole income, is that dance studio. Thank you.
Don't trample each other getting to the microphone. It is.
Welcome. I would like to thank the commissioners.
Your name, please.
My name is Robert Aaron. I am from South Lake Tahoe, California. I want to know, this is very beautiful to see this group. First, I want to do a show of hands. How many people in the community were advised or talked to by Verizon about this tower? Can we have a show of hands? So nobody talked to Verizon?
You need to address the board, sir.
I'm sorry?
You need to address the board.
Oh, okay, I was just asking if anyone had been talked to Verizon. Verizon plays a bait and switch. I'm in Lake Tahoe, they put up a tower in a neighborhood. The lady, Monica Isaacstekan, versus Verizon, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and the city of South Lake Tahoe is in federal court in the Eastern District. They build the cell towers. One of the problems that they have is they turn them into fake trees. They release up to 10,000 pounds of plastics. I personally used the group that did get the lead out up in Lake Tahoe just recently. We removed a lead cable from AT&amp;T. I use their analysis and the material that falls off of the trees contains lead. This happens at copious amounts. They denied that they ever knew anything about it. Five years, this was five years ago. I think we brought this to their attention. They are basically doing industrial litter into Lake Tahoe, which is the drinking water for 12 million people. Mr. Albreton, this must be a very important meeting or he would not be here. He is the tiger for Verizon. And the rest of their group here, these people are not looking out for the community. I've been in this for five years. I can present tons of information. The aesthetics are unreasonable. There's a cell tower now 120-foot tall on Ski Run Boulevard. When I leave Heavenly Valley, the historic view of Lake Tahoe is destroyed. It used to be looking directly at Pyramid Peak. Now alls I see is a huge cell tower that stands out above all the trees by 30 feet. They're very nefarious. Their gap, they say that there's a gap. There is no gap. That, if you investigate and look into it, we did it up in Lake Tahoe. There is no gap. They say there's a significant one. That is BS. I think the community, you guys are the only stop between the community and these corporate entities. He says he's outside counsel. He's their main counsel member, or he's their main counsel. As you look into Albreton, his name and fingerprints are all over this. I've been having problems with this gentleman for five years. I do not trust him and I told his local attorney, you better look into him because I believe Doji is going to be coming around the corner very soon for a lot of people. Thank you very much, commissioners, and I really appreciate you. I am the father of two beautiful kids that I was luckily able to raise in South Lake Tahoe before they proliferated the cell towers everywhere. We put a wrench in the wheel. So thank you and I hope you do the same.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Yes, Brian Stevens again. And I'm in favor of keeping the two items, seven and eight, on the cell towers together and just continuing this so Verizon has more time to find a better location for their tower. I think the location on Stephanie Road there, right next to the park, would be just awful for our community and hurt our home values. So there was plenty of room around this community to find a better place for that tower and I just hope they would do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, my name is Sean Lyman. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gardner, Mr. Arcani, and Mr. Noah Assad for recognizing that if you live in this community, you have a voice. Thank you. My name is Sean Lyman. I am a community member and husband to a local healthcare worker and father to a two- and three-year-old that attend Allianz Friends Preschool. I'm here today to address a forest that is playing out in our community. Twice we have been here to discuss this and twice it has been heavily opposed. So I ask, what has changed? Why would we continue to discuss this when the clear opinion of the surrounding community is negative? Why would the county allow the installation of a 5G cellular tower near the community swim center, the public library, the high school, and across the street from a preschool? Why must this be placed in such close proximity to so many areas where local families and children are located? Why not? We are not far removed from fire season where this summer, we saw a creek fire tear through the Washoe area and directly threaten homes, businesses, and residents. A simple drive up 395 north is all it takes to see the damage done by the creek fire and unfortunately, that will be the case for some time. and unfortunately, that will be the case for some time. Why would we disrupt the natural beauty of, in my opinion, one of the more beautiful locations in the great state of Nevada? To me, a decision to add this tower would be so to the detriment and more so the danger of the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to allow him to go in front of me, but he's having problems standing?
Yeah, I have problems sitting more than five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Standing, I have ruts and screws in my back and all. My name is Reginald Bobo. I live within a quarter of the mile, about six, seven, actually, six houses from where the towers will be, and I understand they're going to stand higher than the mountains in the background, which would, wow, destroy the view. I know there's a dispute on whether it's harmful to children and people, but there's been studies of scientific studies that include the increased cancer risk, cellular stress, headaches, sleep issues, genetic damage, changes to the reproduction system, memory deficits, and impacts on the nervous system, has found that cumulative dose of cell phone, RF can result in significant exposure over time. Young children do not use cell phones, yet they are involuntarily exposed. Cell tower radiation exposures are nonstop, day and night. We can turn our cell phones off, but we cannot turn a tower off. Children that absorb deeper into their brains and bodies, even if the radiation absorption were the same as adults', the effect on children can be far more serious. The charge development, brain and organ systems are more sensitive in environmental stresses. Now, I know there's arguments all against this, but the government has paid probably 200 million or more. In 1921, it was 150 million they were paid to not put warnings on phones and on the cell towers, how it affects the environment. So, there's no real studies since 1990 from the government on these issues of RF radiation. So there's no real studies. They're paying to make sure there isn't any. So, it's like giving the, they do their own studies, saying they're safe, but they're not safe. And so, that's, I hope you, my grandchildren, I keep, my mother, my wife keeps, and I help, and it's devastating to think this, and even from the own cell people, they said, within a mile, it feels like somebody's touching you all the time. Can you imagine being touched all the time for a year? Most people don't even like their spouses touching them 100% of the time. Not alone, a doggone cell tone tower touching you, but you, the actual, the people from this, my sons in Maryland, that they were going to put it up next to elementary school there, the state, it's illegal in most states to have it near an elementary school. And it's horrible for the development of children. But, again, I hope you deny this before even Mondays, and let them appeal it like they're doing eight. So, thank you very much for listening, and have a good holidays.
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays to all of you. And thank you for letting me go. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is David Burns, and I am the president, existing president of the school board of Douglas County. But what I say today is my opinion and my position, and I do not represent the board of trustees from the school. I'm about a person in old school. The old saying is, is you have the one side's opinion, you have the other side's opinion. Somewhere in between is the truth. And I think right now, I haven't seen the truth from either side, or I haven't seen any report, I should say that. What I'm look, would be thinking is, is you really should be having a third-party investigation on the safety. I am responsible, as well as other trustees, for the concern and care of our students, and right now, I can't say that it's secure and safe. When we're going to prove something that could affect the body of our students. I'm not here about trying to convince anybody of anything. I'm, what I'm asking for is, do our due diligence and get as much as we possibly can, and not from Verizon, but from a private end, a company that can do the actual research and give us a proper report. That's what I'm here for. And if that doesn't happen, and we do not, I haven't seen it from the public, I haven't seen anything. And if that's the case, then my personal position is, is please do not allow those to go in where they're, where they want them right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr. Fred Simon. We all think we kind of know who each other is. We don't. You don't know me. I am a physician, I'm a biologist, biochemist. I was the busiest medical legal expert in the United States in my field, 42 states, Guam, Cayman Islands, Puerto Rico. I've done hundreds of cases. I've seen this tune before with ionizing radiation. We went after this 30 years ago, no one listened. We fought industry, we fought hospitals, we fought physicians, and now the standard of care is completely different. They have data, we have data. You need to know the literature. Your attorneys may give you advice. It is the jury and judges who will be the ultimate arbitrators of this. You are at risk as anybody else who's involved in this. Negligence is negligence, we show causation. People will be sued, industry will be sued. I've sued industry. I've sued the largest healthcare corporation in the country, and won. My point to you is, you have the due diligence to do this. I'm an advocate for the children in this community, and you, knowing what I know. I know the facts, I'm educated, well experienced in this, have been in over three dozen radiation ionized, not non-ionized, we're going to find about, about ion, non-ionized. We are finding out. The number one cause of cancer in this country is industry. Think about that. American industry causes most cancers in this country. You will see a change in this in the near future. Think very hard about your citizens and what you represent, why you were elected. You weren't elected to commit to things that are negligent based upon industry, and that's what's going on here, in my opinion. And we will do epidemiologic studies in the near future on all the children in this area. These cell towers sitting near high schools and these other places of childhood growth and education have been proven in other communities to have causation, and that's what will lead to lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Sasha Saint Germain, and I'm a resident of Minden and a homeowner. I work in critical care, and my husband is a paramedic first responder. I didn't think I was going to get nervous. We have two sons, ages one and a half, and three and a half, who attend Allian Friends on County Road. At address 1695 County Road. This is immediately next door to the proposed cell tower site at 1699 County. I am not opposed to a cell tower and improved communication. I am, however, opposed to the location. It will be an eyesore, a potential hazard, and most importantly, it will set a precedent for where we can build such projects. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, hold your applause.
Good afternoon, my name is Bill Cerito. I support the appeal and the position by Minden for Safe Technology, which I'm one of the founders of. The proposed 80-foot monopole tower, Fire Station 6 and 14, would significantly and permanently degrade the aesthetic character of the surrounding area. The affidavits submitted by Rogers and French, along with the justification for appeal, clearly demonstrate the severe visual impact this project would have on our community. The site is located in a prominent and visible area, and the height and industrial appearance of the monopole would make it impossible to blend into the landscape. The nearby residences, businesses, public areas, all enjoy scenic views that would be obstructed by this intrusive structure. The opposition presented at the planning board meeting and cited evidence further emphasized at this point, showing the tower fails to align with the aesthetic values outlined in our developmental code and community standards. Our zoning laws are in place to ensure that developments are compatible with the character of the surroundings. The tower does not meet that standard. Instead, it induces industrial eyesore into the location that has been clearly maintained to preserve its visual harmony. The affidavits also underscore the cumulative harm such projects inflict on property owners and public spaces, as they set precedents for more intrusive infrastructure in sensitive locations. Approving this project would undermine the community's trust in local planning decisions. There are at least intrusive technologies, such as fiber optics, Starlink, which just got approved by T-Mobile, who will be using that hopefully very soon. That could address connectivity without sacrificing the beauty of our town. I urge the commission to reject this application, both applications, and protect the aesthetics values that this Minden unique and desirable place to live. Now, more personal note, Verizon may sue you if you don't give them what they want. What do you think we're going to do? We will fight, fight, fight. We will not give up, we will not cower, we will not go away, we will not ever give up on this. The only thing that we will accept is complete denial of both towers. So if you're going to take this to the next level and take it to court, wouldn't it be better to go against Verizon than your own neighbors? The people that put your signs in our lawn? Now, I'm a Marine, and I took an oath several years ago, and I swore on a Bible, and it meant something. Now, you took, also took an oath to these people, to protect them and this community. I urge you to do the right thing. I guarantee you, you'll sleep better.
Good afternoon, my name is Greg Rolson. I'm a Minden Town resident, and I have represented a group, Minden for Safe Tech, since January. I know that you guys have a difficult decision. I know that you have to base this decision on pretty much Title 20 of our county codes here. I believe back in July, the Minden Town Board took into account all the correct denials, particularly for Station 14, because that's what they had to rule on. I believe you guys will be faced with similar, similar agenda items to oppose that. But basically, I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed 80-foot cell tower at 14. Minden is a town that's renowned for its picturesque surroundings and the small-town charm. The towering cell structure being proposed is not just a functional addition, it's a disruption to a carefully cultivated aesthetics to our community. This tower, with its antennas and enclosed by a stark equipment yard, would dominate the landscape entering into Minden, and pretty much clash with our natural beauty and aesthetics. This area is more than just a location, it's a visual escape. Residents, commuters, and outdoor enthusiasts all enjoy uninterrupted views of our mountains and our expansive skies. Erecting a tower here would tarnish that experience, replacing serenity with an industrial intrusion. This isn't necessary, this isn't necessary cost for progress, it's a short-sighted decision that prioritizes expediency over preservation. Our development code prioritizes the harmony between new projects and their surrounding environment. This tower is the antithesis of that goal, imposing an out-of-scale industrial feature into our neighborhood known for its residential charm, community, and focus. If approved, it risks opening the floodgates to similar developments that could erode Minden's unique appeal. Modern connectivity does not have to come at the expense of our town's visual integrity. Alternatives such as underground fiber optic networks and other solutions that respect the environment while meeting technological needs. Verizon has existing sites it can upgrade if necessary. They've just chosen not to do that. I strongly urge the commissioners to deny this application. Minden has aesthetic value and an integral part of its identity, and it's our duty to ensure they remain intact for future generations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. For the record, there's a couple of people in line who have already spoken on this subject. And if you've already spoken once, you're not allowed a second bite out of the apple.
I didn't know about, you guys said that this could be postponed, so I...
You've already, you already spoke on this issue.
But not officially. You're going to restrict me?
Let's let the next person speak.
I'm urging you to allow me to...
Let the next person speak, thank you. Madam, you're on.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Cindy Trigo, member of the Minden for Safe Technology Group. I'm here because the, I've gone through a thorough inspection of the fire department's hazard mitigation report from 2023. And I was looking for stuff regarding cellphone, cell towers. There's nothing in these mitigation reports regarding the hazards for cell phones, and I think that, I would like to put on the record, I think that needs to be added to this new draft that you've done, that I've also read, that is not included under technological hazards. You know, the area out there in Stephanie Lane has very high risk for flooding, 71% according to your, to your report. It also has, were proposed for a earthquake sometime here, a significant one in this area, also fire. If you notice in the board pack that you have now, the pictures of where Stephanie Lane is, you see all that sagebrush and stuff out there. Also, the fire department had on their task list at the end, I know that it transferred to the county for this mitigation report in July 1st of 2023, that they had suggested that they needed to have a water storage tank out in the Stephanie Lane area. That'd be kind of interesting to know, because I couldn't find any information online, whether that had been completed. We know that these towers draw a lot of energy. I've heard in previous meetings regarding problems with power on the power grid. Putting these towers up, what is that going to mean to this county regarding your power grid? Also, on the Station 14, if you guys notice, the high school has 1,400 kids, you got the daycare and all that, you got two lanes, one going each way in that area. If we had to have an evacuation, which I could not find an evacuation report online, either under the East Fork Fire Department or the counties, showing an evacuation... either under the East Fork Fire Department or the counties showing evacuation plan, I think all this needs to be ascertained, analyzed, and I think all these reports need to be done before any discussion is made about having these towers placed in this county without having some information regarding the safety. Earthquakes, lightning strikes, fire, wildlife fires, you got regular fires from this, electricity fires, you have the flooding, you have everything. Earthquakes, all this stuff is at high risk on your mitigation report. So I'm asking you and begging you to have that group add cellphone towers to that, because you already have one right there across from CVC Hall. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I just spoke to the next young lady who wishes to speak. She mentioned that her comments are regarding things that have occurred since she last spoke and are new, it's not a repeat of information she previously shared. It's up to you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So Verizon is starting with...
Please state your name for the record.
Cheryl Lemke.
Thank you.
Verizon is working with AI. And just remember that AI will have access to everybody's, inside our bodies, through the graphene oxide and everything. And I had an incident with AI, with AT&amp;T. She restricted my speech. She would punish me for researching anything that it didn't approve of by blasting me with radiation. It would, I could put my phone down, and it would almost like threaten me, like hook to my truck. It was completely out of control. It would not allow me to talk to a human being. When I signed up with Verizon and I was having problems with their phone service, I guess, they would not allow me to talk to any human being in the United States. They sent me directly to China, and I was in excruciating pain. You cannot get away from this. So it's, and then also Elon Musk said that AI and this 5G is more dangerous than nuclear weapons. That's what we're gonna be inviting in our county. And so, besides my own, like the First Amendment, right, freedom of speech, which they've already proven to restrict and punish me for it, the Fourth Amendment, the protection of unreasonable searches and seizures of property, AI will have access to every single human being's children, your house, your vehicles, your business. They will know, if you're researching to do a patent, they're gonna know everything about, and then their people are gonna be able to take it. Now, they might be laughing, this trillion-dollar company that's going into works, but they've already destroyed my corporation. They've already taken everything from me. So I am telling you the truth. I am, love you all, I think that you all, even Mr. Rice, is absolutely incredible, magnificent human beings, you all are parents, okay? And I'm begging and pleading to you, telling you the truth, that, and also, we're just kind of researching the United States. I go to Europe a lot, and there are like forty thousand scientific research papers around the world. And people are taking their trucks and blowing up these towers in other countries. They've already destroyed, and I'm able, not to just tell you from the Mexican border to the Canadian border, but other countries. It destroys the land, it destroys everything.
Thank you.
And it's against God.
Next, please.
Good afternoon. My name is George Gabor, and I represent Armel Properties LLC, which is developing the adjacent property with twenty-five house sites at fourteen forty Stephanie Way. Five of the lots will be within three hundred feet or less of the proposed tower. The exposure of the houses on those lots need to be determined, since they will be exposed to the RF fields twenty-four seven. I'm also a retired staff physicist from the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory and a radio amateur KD six ERS. The report included in the agenda packet by Waterford of the radiation exposure is poor quality. They do not address a number of items. They use, number one, Verizon's information. What was it? And did they verify its veracity? Two, they do fire field calculations, but do not give the range distance. The energy varies as the square of the distance from the source, which means that half the distance, you get four times the exposure. They do near-field calculations, using only the horizontal bandwidth. The antennas have numerous side lobes, which can change the exposure within a close radius of, at ground level. Since we do not know the radiation patterns of the antenna, exposure is unknown. The FCC has not considered the effects of long-term exposure to microwave energy. In this case, it'll be nineteen hundred to thirty-seven hundred megahertz. The energy is deposited as molecular agitation, that is heat, and has the potential to break or alter chemical bonds. Your microwave oven operates at twenty-four hundred and fifty megahertz, right in the middle of it. Calculating the field power density of, at three hundred feet and at three hundred and twenty watts at thirty-seven hundred megahertz, using the OET sixty-five equation number twenty, which is what Waterford used, gives about six milliwatts per square centimeter at three hundred feet, and that exceeds the FCC standards. It is of interest and health of our citizens to cite this tower on another location.
Next.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Rayannon, and I am a part of Minden for Safe Technology. I just wanted to come up and say that I oppose both towers, and I am in support of continuous for both Agenda Items Seven and Eight, for us to explore alternative options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katrina French, and I ditto Rayanna. Thank you.
Thank you for the ditto.
Jim Jackson, couldn't resist. We've had one other incidence of Johnson Lane folks that didn't turn out so well with this board. I hope this one turns out better for the folks up in Johnson Lane area. Being thrown under the bus once, I hope was all it's gonna be. I hope that these towers are not approved when they come back up in April. Listen to the folks. I said that once before, I'm gonna say it again. As far as the radiations from these towers, I'm not an expert on that. All I can do is relate an experience that I had when I was in Vietnam. I was on a naval gunfire fire team. Our base was underneath a navigation communications tower for all the ships. We lived within twenty feet of that tower. I could take a fluorescent bulb out, stand by the tower, or stand by where I slept at night, run my hand up the tube, and it would light up. I'd run my hand back down the tube, it would go off. Now, there was a lot of radiation, and yes, that explains why I am the way I am. Now, I don't know if it's the same kind of radiation, but I was just notified by the VA, I am now considered disabled because of my service in Vietnam. That was part of it. So if they will consider me disabled, then I don't think we want to have these towers close to where our children are, or the adults for that matter. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
David Seet, resident of Gardenville. Trust. Verizon would have us trust that 5G is safe. The US government told us that the COVID scandemic originated from a wet market in China. The truth is that the scandemic originated from a bioweapon lab in Wuhan, funded by the murderous Anthony Fauci and his subversive gain-of-function funded by the US government. Trust broken. We were told by the US government and the pharmaceutical industry that the experimental emergency use authorization COVID-19 clot shot is safe and effective. This clot shot has been shown by countless independent studies and tens of thousands of courageous doctors, investigators, and researchers, and analysts to be anything but safe and effective. Trust broken. We were told the Hunter Biden laptop was disinformation. Trust broken. We were told by the US government officials that Joe Brideme is as sharp as a tack. Trust broken. The southern border is secure. Trust broken. The US government has not conducted a single meaningful, in-depth analysis of the harmful effects of 5G on living things. The telecom industry touts the meaningless, shallow analysis as the basis for claiming 5G is safe. There have been hundreds, if not thousands, of independent analysis of 5G that shows it is anything but safe. Trust broken. The government has demonstrated time and again through their corporate alliances that they are not looking out for the people of our country. The residents of Douglas County are looking to this board for protection from the US government and corporate collusion evil. Vote no on the current 5G cell tower construction proposals.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rick DiCarlo. I've been here pretty much all my life, and I can tell that all of you are really listening intently and trying to think about and what everybody is saying, and I, we appreciate that, and I just, you know, of course, would ask you this one thing, which, would you want one next to your house? And would you want your kids to be playing underneath it? And they can, you know, we can, what he said about the government is true, and is that common sense would dictate, number one is, gee, I had a phone in the nineties, and it works better than it does now. Of course, they'll have something to say about that, oh, we have internet, we need all these things. Well, it's just frequencies, there's another way to do it, there's always a better way to do it. But instead of having a steady, how about common sense? So if, and I remember even in the eighties, I had one of the very first phones. It, it worked in Gardenville. Amazing! And we didn't have eighty, eighty-foot towers. I did many subdivisions in this town, and some, I could have just imagined back then asking the board then, hey, by the way, I want to put a eighty-foot, really ugly tower next to this amazing subdivision. They would have laughed at me. And, but then they're here saying it's safe, it's good, it's all great. Common sense dictates that if there's even a chance that you believe that that might hurt, and that maybe we've been wrong, since we've been wrong about so many other things, and they're proving it daily, we might ask ourselves to maybe change our minds about a few things. And I would say this, is that the people that are about ready to take over, you might want to listen to what RFK is saying, you might want to listen to what they're already speaking about, because this is all there. He's already spoken about 5G towers. I've taken a reading on, on a meter, and I would have any of you go with me and take that meter, and you'll see the radiation that's coming off of those towers pegged. Let's stick our children up there and see if we believe the meter, or if we believe them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, I'm Susan Rolson. We're from Minden for Safe Tech, and we are against both towers, they are too close to our children. Location, location, location. Please, let's put these towers away from our children and our residents. I just want to briefly just say something. I was a registered nurse in intensive, pediatric intensive care and neonatal intensive care. You cannot give children the same drugs, the same drug dose, you can't expose them to the same radiation, the same CT scans. They've already figured out, too many CT scans on children and neonates can cause cancer. They are now limiting. Back when I worked in neonatal, we did it all the time. Now, they are absolutely limiting them, because they're finding it causing a problem. And I know that's different than non-ionizing radiation, but that is also harmful, and we're gonna find more and more out about that. Anyways, you can't do the same procedures, children fight infection differently, they are small, they cannot handle what we can handle as adults. We should not expose our children to these cell towers. They need to be further away from residents and children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Tenorelli. I am the owner of sixteen ninety-five County Road, that alley in Friends is located. I fear that this cell tower is going to decrease my property value on the property, and also harm the children, which is more important to me than the property value. But I've seen this happen before. My brother-in-law had a cell tower put in his backyard, because he had a power plant back there. It dropped his property value by three hundred thousand dollars. So that's all I gotta say, pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Hartman, and you've seen me before. I am the owner of alley in Friends daycare. You also have heard that we have a hundred and five children between the ages of one and six at our school. We, as our landlord just explained to you, it's a beautiful facility built just for kids. And I was very happy to hear that Verizon might be looking for different options. I'm very thankful that they're going to take the time, and I'm all for their continuance. So, thank you, thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Casey Rogers for the record. I think there's some discrepancy over the Clearwire Tower at Station Six. The old tower is, to my knowledge, is not in use, hasn't been in use for years. And it's being replaced by a Verizon tower, just, just for the fact that they don't, they want to take one down and put another one up. And I'm just not sure you guys know that information, so I thought maybe you needed to hear that. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Nikki Florio. I spoke to you at one of the earlier meetings. I run a pollinator and climate project called Be Heroic, and we focus on the technologies that are taking down pollinators and food and ecosystems that are accelerating the current mass extinction event. And one of the most dangerous technologies on earth today for every living organism is 5G technology. And 5G goes from thirty to three hundred gigahertz, as you know, but even at the 4G LTE range and 4G ranges, when you're in megahertz, those are having big impacts on the environment. Now, this area, this particular area in Nevada, is already saturated with this, this lower end of 5G, the thirty to forty-plus range. And that's through the 4G LTE and the 5G and 5G plus in the area. And it's a bunch of different carriers, I'm not pointing the finger directly at Verizon, but what I'm saying is, you don't need extra radiation in this area. Three miles is not that far, this is a very tight-knit community. I'm sure if there was a fire in Carson City and someone wanted to know what was happening, and they didn't have Verizon, they could, they could ask a friend, and this is just an example, I'm not talking about this particular area, they could ask a friend, because people out here are that connected. 5G causes a lot more illnesses and disasters than it would even ever save putting up two simple towers. From the ground up, 5G impacts microbes, microbial communities in soils, on plants, makes plants toxic. So if you have a garden in your backyard, they might look and smell and taste the same, but they're toxic. It splits single and double DNA in plants, the same way it does in humans. And so it impacts all types of plants that we eat, it impacts grasses on the rangelands that the cattle eat and dairy. And all pollinators are affected, small insects, because millimeter-wave radiation superheats their body... Small insects, because millimeter-wave radiation superheats their bodies. They're the foundations of the food chain. That's why you have far fewer birds out here. You have far fewer bats than you used to, amphibians and other animals. So you really don't want this around. And when it comes to children, children are much smaller than we are. They have a higher rate of respiration. They also have more body fat and thinner skulls. So they have a higher specific absorption rate than we do. When it comes to wildfires, this area, because of the towers that are already in, the forested areas are already in trouble. And you can take a look at the fire that happened between Placerville and South Lake Tahoe. They put those towers in all the way down the upper part of Highway 50, and it causes the plants to express terpenes. And that makes it a lot more fire-prone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Yvonne Pinto, Municipal Engagement, Verizon Wireless. We are in agreement for the continuance for both items. I would like to add to clarify for the record. This is the first time we've been asked about alternatives for the Hayborn site, an alternative sites analysis, which is Fire Station 6. An alternative site analysis was prepared and submitted. And so this is the first time we're hearing of requests. We'll be happy to have the continuance to look at alternatives for that location. Additionally, just to clarify how long we've been looking at alternatives for Fire Station 14, it has been since the Town of Minden Board meeting. We have been engaging with landlords based on the direction we received from the board at the time and have not received a willing landlord report back. So that's where our alternatives, we're trying to get that on board, to work with the residents, work with the commissioners, to find a solution that works with everyone. But, and that's why we're asking for the continuance on eight, is to continue that process of getting a willing landlord on board for the alternatives that have been proposed to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Sims. I've lived in the area for 14 years in Minden. I think that Minden is a jewel. I think it's a diamond in the rough, and we need to protect it. And I agree with the woman that spoke before, the Verizon woman, about the soil and the birds and the bees. And my main concern is the children. And do we need coverage of super speed, or do we care about the brains of our children? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
At this time, I would like to move for the tabling of item number seven and eight until a date certain of no later than April 3rd, sooner or on or before April 3rd.
Second.
And I wanted to say that the purpose of this is to give Verizon and the Verizon the opportunity to look at alternate sites.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion by the board, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Both matters are deferred until April the 23rd. Sorry, April the 3rd. And we will have a 10-minute recess. All right, my day is complete. I'm going to call the meeting back in their order. Okay, we will move on to, back to item number six. And this is for possible action. Discussion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Tahoe Transportation District, Carson City Department of Parks, Recreation and Open Space, and the County of Washoe Community Services Departments, recreational, I'm sorry, regional parks and open space to support the Tahoe Transportation District's application for for CONSERVE Nevada funding for the planning, design, and construction of the Lake Tahoe path system and authorize the county manager to sign the MOU. You don't look like Ryan. You're on.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Brooke Ady, Community Services Director. I'm going to introduce Tara Steyer and Karen Mullen from the Tahoe Transportation District. They are going to be presenting on the MOU today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tara Steyer, Capital Program Manager with Tahoe Transportation District, and I'm joined today by Karen Mullen, TTD Consultant. So Tahoe Transportation District has been working to implement various state line to state line bikeway projects. And in 2012, to support that effort, a memorandum of understanding was created between Douglas County, Washoe County, and Carson City to outline the use of, at that point it was called State Question One funding. Now, the funding is called CONSERVE Nevada, and we need to update that MOU. So the CONSERVE Nevada program regulations include a $5 million set aside essentially for the Lake Tahoe path system. We also refer to that as the Tahoe East Shore Trail, as well as the state line to state line bikeway. So the MOU is needed for the local jurisdictions to name TTD as the project lead and to receive funding to move three projects forward. So the proposed distribution is outlined on this slide. So the $2 million would be for Sand Harbor to Thunderbird Cove. That's in the SR 28 corridor, located in Washoe County. And then $2 million for Thunderbird Cove to Secret Harbor. So that is also state route 28 corridor, and that spans Washoe County and Carson City. And then the $1 million to support what we call the South Demo Phase 1A, located in Douglas County, and that's between State Line and Laura Drive, located right behind Dart Licker at the base of Kingsbury Grade. So I'm briefly going to just cover the two projects related to the MOU. I believe that you have a handout, which is probably easier to read than the slide. I do want to note that all of the figures, as well as the construction years, are very fluid. This is a living document. So taking our attention first to that mustard section here. So this is the central corridor, Sand Harbor to Thunderbird. It's 1.75 miles of shared use path. It has some vista points included, as well as proposed intersection improvements. This segment of trail actually was awarded $24 million this year in federal raise funding. So that has put some efficiencies on us. So we're trying to move these projects in the corridor along a little quicker. And I should also note that our focus has been on the SR 28 corridor. All of the projects mentioned today have an approved EA that has included public outreach. So then moving south to that dark orange section of trail, that's Thunderbird Cove to Secret Harbor. That's just under a mile of trail between Chimney Beach, excuse me, between Thunderbird Cove and Secret Harbor. So in addition to the trail there, there are parking improvements at Chimney Beach, as well as Secret Harbor, totaling up to 250 parking spaces. The Forest Service did construct the Chimney Beach parking last summer. And then Phase Two will include a pedestrian crossing there, as well as restrooms and parking kiosks. So also worth noting is the revenues generated from parking management in the corridor go to the operations and maintenance for the trail and parking lots. So now moving on to the Douglas County trail. So again, we're calling this the South Demo Phase 1A. And this is the preferred alignment that was established in the environmental analysis. I do want to be clear, there is a section that runs along Highway 50, but there are no proposed impacts to Highway 50. No lane reductions or anything of that nature. So this proposed trail would also include a sidewalk. And it's sort of the missing link. So there are completed trails, as you see at the north, and completed trail on Laura Drive that extends then to Nevada Beach and on to Round Hill Pines Beach. So once this segment of trail is complete, it will offer a car-free opportunity for anyone in that casino resort core to go to the Nevada Beach or Round Hill Pines Beaches.
Could, questions okay?
Yeah.
Could you just orient me a little bit more? I see, that's Edgewood on the upper left.
That's correct. Right here is Edgewood. So this is Lake Parkway, and then 50. And then this is the 4H, yeah, 4H Road. And then here's Laura and Karen.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
No problem. So also worth noting, those completed sections of trail used the State Question One funding when they were constructed a few years ago, we'll say. So just in summary, this is really a procedural item. The MOU allows TTD to receive the funding and move these projects forward. We did apply for a grant earlier this year for that Phase 1A section. Unfortunately, we were not successful. But the CONSERVE Nevada funding will be instrumental in matching any federal discretionary funds that we do receive. So at this point, there's no financial or fiscal impact for Douglas County beyond the staff time to support coming before you, as well as maybe letters of support and things like that. So without I take any other questions.
So this eventually, eventually will go all the way from Incline all the way to California, keeping pedestrians and bicycles separated from the traffic on Highway 50, as well as Highway 28.
Yes.
And with the facilities that are going in on Spooner Pass, when this is at completion, it will be a marvelous thing for all counties concerned, as well as our citizens and those visitors that come to see us. And we're doing it without taxing our own population. It's a marvelous project. Thank you. And with that, I will open it to the board.
Mr. Chair, I just had one question. This says the bikeway is a non-motorized path system. What about e-bikes and those types of things?
Well, we don't have any regulations against e-bikes being on the path. It's kind of a hard thing to regulate. But there have been efforts on the completed three-mile section between Incline Village and Sand Harbor. So we've been monitoring that. And so far, it doesn't seem to be a problem. There are a lot of efforts just to keep folks under a certain speed, regardless if they have an e-bike or if they're just a conventional bike.
I think that's worth monitoring. Occasionally, when I'm up at Lake Tahoe, I can't help but always see those green motorized scooters laying on the side of the road and abandoned. And certainly, we don't want to become a collection point for that, so.
Agreed.
And what's the speed limit?
I'm sorry?
What is the speed limit?
15 miles per hour.
15?
15.
Wow. Go ahead and try walking that past. Any further comments from the board? Seeing no further comments from the board, I will open this to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good afternoon. I'm here, Beth Wallace. I'm a resident of Zephyr Heights. I'm here to ask that you consider postponing any action on the MOU presented today. I think we're all pretty savvy as to why an MOU is needed. I know that they need permission to apply for grants and pre-planning. But in my opinion, many of the questions, there are many questions that need to be answered for the public prior to approval. Many of us wanted to attend the Park and Rec meeting last Tuesday. We have great interest in the bike path. And specifically, that segment from State Line to Laura Drive is described in the MOU. I think the MOU is quite vague. It lasts for 10 years. 10 years, things can go slowly, but they can go fast. We have questions about the path description, the actual location of the path, although we heard that today, the safety of the path, the makeup of the proposed working group, wondering why there are not more members of the general public or residents that are part of that committee. The TTD as the project lead. Do you have some obligations in the MOU? It did talk about some match funds, some environmental considerations, the possible impact of a path right next to the proposed Barton Hospital. Will the plan honor the Douglas County directive that Highway 50 remain a four-lane highway and serve as an evacuation route? And what are the financial implications for the county? My biggest question is this. I'm just kind of a peon in this whole process. But I have researched and I have studied. And my biggest question about this whole process is what the working group will propose. Whose plan are we going to follow? The US 50, revised CMP? The Douglas County Comprehensive Trails Plan? The Nevada State Line to State Line Bikeway feasibility study? NDOT's plan, as proposed last February, that we reduce the width of our lane? And they still have bike paths on those plans that they have listed on their website. Don't get me wrong, I'm a proponent of bike paths. But I feel like the public needs more answers. And these are many of the reasons that I think you should take it to the community prior to making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lernhart?
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Lernhart. I'm seconding Beth's presentation with a couple of additions. Because when I saw this first, I was concerned this was a rerun of the NDOT road diet. I'm still not convinced it is not. I understand that there has been Resolution 2024 R 031 that says it's an emergency evacuation route. But it does not specify that the lane width is going to stay the same, which is important for large vehicles and for snow conditions because the wobble of these trucks can lead to lane changes. Anyway, I have wondered why there is such a rush to pass this MOU. I have no objection in the getting in line for some of these funds. That's not my intent, and that's not how I read and understood it, nor did some of my neighbors. They all were worried that this would be a rerun what we had three years ago. But will we be part of the planned working group, as is stipulated by OML? Because that's in your MOU. It doesn't list all kinds of organization, but it doesn't say the public. I think it's Nevada, and Nevada law should apply to it. Is the working group going to honor the resolution of this county and the decision of Governor Lombardo? That's one of my main questions. The other questions are, again, why is there such a rush? I still haven't heard that there is a deadline. I've talked to certain county officials out in the hallway, and I still don't understand the need for a rush. I haven't been given a deadline by when this has to be passed. I don't know why this can't be postponed until we heard the Parks and Rec Committee and their presentation on Monday. The other problem is the inclusion of e-bikes. I concur with Commissioner Gardner. E-bikes are problematic. I have personally witnessed them up there. They can, there is no one e-bike. There is e-bikes that can go 25 miles an hour, and some of them that can go over 35 miles an hour. To enforce it, there is no enforcement. There is no, there's even no restriction on the bike. One bike could be intended for 25 miles an hour, as it is in my neighborhood, and I've seen them taking over cars. So this came up with the Forest Service recently. They did a huge survey online. TTD can talk to them or look at their outcome. It has raised a lot of controversy, even with bikers, because there seems no regulation or enforcement. And I guess I reached my time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any discussion by the board, or are you ready for a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I did want to, thank you, I did want to explain. I serve as the Board Representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And yes, we did have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday. And to my understanding, this item was on the agenda. However, it was not asking, it was presentation only, not asking for a recommendation by that board. So I don't know that that is a problem for us going forward in advance of the meeting on Monday night that they're going to have.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion.
I move that we approve an MOU with the Tahoe Transportation District as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number nine. Hey, listen, without a guide map, who knows where we are? All right, item number nine. For possible action. Discussion to adopt Ordinance 2024-1633A and ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and planning development overlay district for APN 1220-15-701-001 by 1, repealing Ordinance Number 2002-1022, which changed the zoning on the subject parcel from FR 19, Forest and Range, 19 acres minimum lot size, to SFR 8,000, Single Family Residential, 8,000 square foot minimum lot size, with a PD planned development overlay, PD 02-06, because the associated development was never inaugurated and the tentative map expired. And two, rectify the same parcel as SFR 12,000, Single Family Residence, 12,000 square foot minimum lot size, with a planned development overlay. The board will also consider approving the associated application for a tentative subdivision map. The subject property is a 33.20 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of Main River and Dresslerville Roads in the SFR 8,000 PD zoning district in the Gardinerville Rancho's community plan and is designated as a receiving area. The applicant is Rancho's LLC, Keith Serpa, and Sam Landis. And the applicant's representative is Mannard Consulting. This is the second reading. A.J. Hames and Lucille Rao.
Thank you, Chairman Rice. Kate Marolus O'Neil, Community Development Planning Director. I'm sure you're happy you got to say Lucille's name and not mine. But I apologize, Lucille did have a family emergency. So I came over here, just came over. I usually like to dress up better, and I didn't anticipate seeing you all today. So I apologize for that. But I just wanted to let you know, and Lucille sends her apologies for not being able to attend. attend today. So at this point, I'll hand that over to A.J.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you, Mr. Chair. A.J. Hames from the DA's office for the record. So this is similar to the presentation that you all saw in November. So we'll kind of just go through it really quick. It should feel like review. Also, a lot of the information that I'm about to present, you saw, of course, in March of this year. So this is not the first time we've gone over much of this information. I'll try to move quickly, since I know you're familiar with the project. So you can see here, this is a proposed residential project that's going to be occurring at the property that's highlighted in these maps. On the left side, you can see the future land use for this property. It's designated as receiving area. And on the right side, you can see the current zoning, which is SFR 8,000. It is also subject to a PD overlay. The receiving area is a future land use in our master plan. It designates parcels within community plans identified for future urban development that require, in most circumstances, development rights from sending areas. While not expressly defined in code, urban, as that term is used, urban development in residential areas specifically is typically, or at least historically, has been done at 2.01 or more dwelling units per acre, which all means that traditionally, receiving area is, if it's going to be developed residential, it will ultimately be zoned either multifamily residential, SFR 8,000, or SFR 12,000. SFR 12,000 is the least dense zoning district traditionally associated with receiving area. This parcel was originally going to be developed way back in 2002. At that time, a project was approved. It's not the project that's before you today. That was a higher-density project. That's what brought the current zoning to the parcel, SFR 8,000, with the planned development overlay. There were 95 lots for single-family homes. And ultimately, however, nothing happened. That project was not inaugurated, the approval was expired. And the parcel essentially sat dormant for two decades. Bringing us to 2023, last year, when the current applicant put together a new presentation, a new project for the property. That project includes SFR 12,000 zoning with the planned development overlay. And originally, as presented earlier this year, included 85 lots for single-family homes. This is just to kind of refresh your recollection on what the project was proposed to look like back in March. And a lot of it will still appear this way under the current proposal. You can see just kind of a general layout. There is a large area around the edge of the development that they call a buffer zone that serves different purposes. And then you can see on the right just some conceptual samples of what some homes might look like in that development. So this was originally all brought before you on March 7th. At that point in time, collectively, the commission did express some concerns about the project. There was generally an appreciation for the design and many of the aspects of the project, but overall, there were two primary concerns that were voiced. The first was the impact on safety of Riverview Drive, and the second was the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. This is a picture of Riverview Drive. This is just something that we pulled off of Google Maps. But it kind of shows you the area that was discussed on March 7th, and then again, back in November. This is currently what the road looks like. You can see the golf course on the right, a parking lot on the left, and then it's a two-lane road with a center turn lane, and then a small shoulder on the north side of the road near the golf course. The issues with this road are, well, there are many. It is a road that conducts significant vehicle traffic because it is sort of the main entryway and gateway into the entire Gardiner Ville Rancho's area. It's also a thoroughfare for pedestrians and golf carts that are using the golf course, and is also sometimes used by pedestrians and bicyclists who are traveling from the Rancho's to the commercial areas along US Highway 395. As I already mentioned, and as you can see, there are no sidewalks, there's no dedicated pedestrian zone, and the curved design of the road makes it difficult for drivers to see what is coming up ahead of them. Those were some concerns that were expressed during that March 7th meeting. And originally, as proposed back in March, there was nothing in the development proposal to address those concerns. Other concerns related to neighborhood compatibility. As you can see here, there is a significant amount of SFR 12,000 zoning in the Gardiner Ville Rancho's. There's even SFR 8,000 and multifamily residential zoning along Tillman and Kimmerling, but not directly abutting the property itself. So there was a concern that allowing SFR 12,000 zoning in this corner of the Rancho's would be incompatible, especially with the SFR 1 zoning to the north. Because of those concerns, the board did vote in March to deny the applications, as they then stood. Following that denial, Rancho's did promptly file two lawsuits against the county. The first was a petition for judicial review, essentially asking the court to overturn this board's decision. And the second was a complaint for damages alleging, damages associated with the denial. So the potential liability for the county was that had we lost those lawsuits, the applications would have been approved, and there would have been nothing to address the board's concerns on Riverview Drive or regarding neighborhood compatibility. And additionally, we would have opened ourselves up to damages, which could have included costs resulting from the denial, possibly including carrying costs, attorney's fees, and other losses associated with the delay. Lawsuits are slow, and so even though that was filed promptly following this court's, or excuse me, this board's denial of the project, the briefing was not completed until July. There were some subsequent filings. A case conference report was required in September. I worked to prepare that case conference report with counsel for Rancho's LLC. And it was during those conversations that it became apparent to me that a settlement might be possible. So throughout the month of October, we did work to negotiate a settlement that was done under the direction of the county manager's office and also this board. That settlement agreement was brought before this board last month, on November 7th, and it was unanimously approved. The terms of that agreement tried to address the commissioner's concerns with regard to those two items I've already mentioned. First, with regard to Riverview Drive, there would be a payment towards safety improvements, and then there would also be reductions in units to increase neighborhood compatibility. Following that meeting, those lawsuits were both resolved. So in the complaint for damages action, the court dismissed that lawsuit with prejudice, meaning those claims are now gone, they can't be re-brought against the county. In the petition for judicial review action, those were remanded to the board, and the court ordered that this board take action consistent with the terms of the settlement So I'll go quickly over the changes to the original plan presented in March, and now what you're considering today. First, there are now going to be concessions towards improving safety on Riverview Drive. First, Rancho's LLC will pay $60,000 towards safety enhancements there. And that's a number that we came up with, we being the county. One of the proposals to make Riverview Drive more safe is to eliminate that center turn lane that you see there and turn that into the westbound lane, which would leave a large area of road available to the north for pedestrians and golf carts. Essentially converting what is currently the westbound lane into a dedicated pedestrian or golf cart lane. And we did take that to our Public Works Department, and they determined that the approximate cost, it was just a little under $60,000. And that would include the cost to slurry the road and re-stripe it. So that's the number that we agreed to. That is the number that Rancho's LLC has agreed to pay. However, we can use those funds to implement other safety solutions if we believe that they are necessary. That might include crossing signals. I believe there's already efforts being made to install some crossing signals there. It could include potentially a barrier, something separating that northernmost pedestrian lane from the driving lanes. It could include any number of other ideas. But that $60,000 amount is what the developer is paying to the county. To address neighborhood compatibility, the developer has also agreed to reduce the units in the development. So specifically on the northern boundary of the property, they are going to reduce those, the number of lots on the northern boundary to 13. And that will actually bring the northern boundary in line with the number of houses that you would get if this were zoned SFR 1/2. So if you look at the northern boundary, it's about 1,322 feet. Along that northern boundary line, including the buffer zone, there are going to be 13 homes. If you look just across the street, directly across Riverview Drive, those homes are zoned SFR 1/2. If you were to take a line and extend it 1,322 feet, you would cover 13 homes. So the 13 homes that will be along the northern boundary of the project are consistent with the nearby SFR 1/2 zoning. So we're essentially taking the standards that would apply if it were SFR 1/2 and sort of applying it to that northern boundary in that way. The other benefits from the original project will remain. Here again, this is the design from the original proposal, but I think it does a good job of illustrating some of those other benefits. The project will still maintain that buffer zone, which serves a number of purposes. It establishes an open space. There is going to be a pedestrian trail that will be installed through there so that not just residents of this community, but all Rancho's residents will be able to access and use that trail. On the northern end, within that buffer zone, there's going to be flood mitigation infrastructure installed, which is actually more than what's needed to cover the drainage and runoff generated by this project. So that's actually going to work to benefit those who are residing just north of the project specifically, but also generally, anyone in that area of the Rancho's. There's going to be an HOA created to maintain the drainage infrastructure, so that's a benefit that the county receives, but that we don't have to pay to maintain. There's also going to be the original $45,000 payment, which was always part of the project. That money is going to go towards improvements on Riverview Drive and the Highway 395 intersection. And then finally, they are still required to comply with the Gardiner Ville Rancho's conditions of their water will serve. And I understand that their original will serve did expire, but they have since obtained a new will serve from the Rancho's GID. And so they will be complying with those conditions. And a lot of those dealt with landscaping, for instance. They're not going to be putting in grass around the edges because the GID felt that that was not a good use of their limited water resources. So they're going to be taking a responsible approach to their water usage, and that is because of that will serve letter that they've received. So all of those benefits, which were present in the original, those remain. So with all of that in mind, we recommend at this point in time that the board take two actions. The first would be a motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-1633A as presented, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report and the proposed minute order, because the findings have been met. And if you'd like to see those findings enumerated, they are included in the staff report. The ordinance approves the rezoning of the parcel, and it also approves the planned development. As a second motion, we'd recommend that the board approve the associated tentative subdivision map, which was application DP 230090, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report. Because again, the required findings have been met. And if you review the conditions in the staff report and in the minute order, they do incorporate all of the key terms of the settlement agreement. So they will be required to reduce the units, they will be required to only have 13 units on the northern end, and they will be required to make that $60,000 payment towards safety improvements on Riverview Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wish to add anything? Are you window dressing?
I am window dressing. Can't you tell today? No, I have nothing to add.
I want to thank you all for coming to the table and resolving the concerns that this board had. I know that's one of my favorite golf courses. And every time I end up on the last hole and then try to drive that cart back to where I can park it, you have your heart in your throat the whole time, please don't run over me. And this will rectify much of that problem, as well as the golfers walking with their carts behind them. You know, thank you very much for that. And my safety and welfare have been taken care of. And I bring it back to the board now that I've made my comments. And any comments from the board? Seeing none, I will open this to public comment.
David Nelson, I want to make sure that you understand, I'm just speaking as a citizen of Douglas County. I'm on various boards, but I'm not speaking for any of them. I want to remind you that there are a lot of findings that need to be found, and that in order to approve this, you have to find that all of the findings have been met. And the finding I'm going to talk about today is the compatibility with the surrounding There's more to compatibility than just size, although that's one of the things I'm going to talk about today. This represents a 12,000 square foot lot. To the north of this project are seven or eight parcels that are an acre and a half. And this is that. Now, if size doesn't matter, maybe you can just throw this away. But if size does matter, and I'm going to explain to you why, and why after 52 years of being in the real estate business, I know an awful lot about this subject. This is the edge of a neighborhood that has a very distinct personality. And that is the fact that it's golf course property. All the lots in this whole neighborhood are an acre or more. They're all zoned one acre. But most of them are larger than an acre because when it was being developed, it was being developed in the Rancho's. We refer to it the Rancho's because it was kind of a small ranch-type area. It really wasn't meant to be a rural, I mean, an urban area. It was meant to be rural completely. And that's where our first development in the Rancho's took place and why it's called the Gardiner Ville Rancho's. It's distinct from most other areas in Douglas County. Now we're bringing the rest of Douglas County into our neighborhood. I've talked to every, not everyone, because we couldn't, some people weren't home, but I've talked to everybody along South Riverview on the south side of the street. Probably out of the 12, I mean, out of the seven or eight, probably talked to five of them, and they all are very upset about this project. And in the last meeting, I mentioned the possibility of maybe being able to split our acre 0.48, take off the 0.48 so we could build our own buffers between our neighborhood and what you're proposing here. I think I've been told that it would take a master plan amendment, and that's expensive, and seven people probably can't afford it.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, sorry. But that's the main point. You've got to make all those findings.
James McCallum for the record. I do agree with the last speaker. The original Rancho's Red Swift developed the land, and the regular residential lots were 0.6 acres. So this is smaller than that. And so I will say, I agree with that, and to the north is quite larger. My concern, and I raised it when we had our My concern, and I raised it when we had our Ranchos meeting last night, I am the chairman, I'm not speaking for the board, but in talking about the will serve letter, we did issue, again unanimously, a will serve letter for this. And I talked about this with a developer, and I, we at least understand each other on this. The problem is when an owner of land has a huge portion of land and shows you a development that's much smaller, you don't, as a board, neither the Ranchos Board, or you, or the Planning Commission, can see what the whole thing is. Because that's when you look at what's going to affect the roads, traffic, all of the things that our citizens, our neighbors are concerned with, what's going to happen there. It's a much, much larger piece than this 33 acres. Now, he did say that when, when it comes forward again, that they will show that when they produce the next project, but it's not incumbent, he doesn't have to. He said he would. We'll take, we'll take his word for it. But any situation, if we look at how controversial the park land deal was, at least when you saw that, you saw how many homes it could be. You saw the whole scope of a project. And whether you agreed with that project or not, at least you knew what it was. In this case, you can't see that. We see a little bit. It was sort of like looking at a map, and somebody's cut a hole in the map to show you one little part. So I would just raise caution to the board that we don't know what the whole thing is, the impact of our county, the impact of both county infrastructure and Ranchos infrastructure, the water to support 85 homes, we certainly can do that. And that's why we voted for the will serve. Much larger project would require much more infrastructure. So being aware of what the whole picture is, instead of what a smaller portion of it is, is what concerns me. And again, I do want to thank the developer for the zero escape on the border. I asked for that, so I appreciate that. It's just knowing what the whole picture is. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Jeannie Shizuru. To continue on with what Jim McCallum said, I think most of you on the board realize that this Ranchos area that surrounds, and I've done this at your meeting before, surrounds the ranchos. That's 500 acres that were master planned for 2,500 units. This is literally the first group, these, these 85. But that was 25 years ago, and now we have a lot more information about the water situation in the ranchos, even though those water studies have not been presented to the public. And most people don't know about it because David belongs to the water, Carson Water Sub Conservancy District, and he's going to be on the GRG ID, then he has seen some of this information about the water study. No, there isn't enough water for 2,500 homes. And so even if this developer has done some concessions for this first piece, Jim McCallum is right. You're, you're just looking at the tip of the iceberg. And so what you do, what precedence you set for this particular piece is pretty important because it's kind of like our, our national debt. There is a finite amount of water in this valley, and 2,500 homes pretty much blows that apart. So when that water is no longer available for everything that's been zoned, then that hard decisions will be made. The more conservative that this, this board is with this first piece, the better. I tell you, based on what David's told me, that that 25 acres should really only hold 500 homes. That means one home per acre, instead of the 2,500 homes that's mid-master plan zone. So the, the appropriate safer zoning would be more like one acre for the Ranchos water situation. And the other thing I wanted to tell you is that, yes, on Commissioner Tarkanian's suggestion, we went to our neighbors and asked, how would they feel about having a split off to create their own buffer between the development and the, the lots on the north side that everybody's been pointing to? And of course, they, they wanted to hear more about it. So we pursued a, a meeting with Tom Delaire immediately after your November 7 meeting, and he has not responded to us. He, he emailed immediately that it would require a master plan amendment, but we didn't seem to have enough time in this, in this four weeks for Tom Delaire to agree to meet with us. We have promised our neighbors that we will get back to our neighbors on what we find out, and some of them have reached out to us since then. But it was very disappointing that we've asked Tom Delaire to speak to us personally on behalf of our neighbors, and we didn't have time for that.
Thank you.
Way back the first part of the year when this development was first presented, I thought it was one of the nicest looking ones of all the ones I've seen in the valley. The homes were very well designed, they were nice in appearance, the whole layout of the development seemed to be pretty nice. Now, I know this isn't what you normally expect to hear from me, but I think with the concessions that the developer has made, and this is one area, the next one, if they don't have the water, they don't have to approve that, and that could stop it at that point. But I think that he's made concessions to improve the traffic on Riverview Drive. To make those concessions, I think it's something that you should approve. And I think you've got your hands tied, you're going to have to approve it anyway and stuff. So, but I think it's one of the nicer looking developments of all the ones that have been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment? Mr. Delaire.
Good afternoon, Chairman Weiss. Tom Delaire for the record. I did receive an email from Mr. Nelson on November 10th. I responded that evening to a meeting request. I gave him a bunch of information on the 13th. Never heard back from him, and the last email I sent to him was on November 17th. So I have been trying, I have not physically called him, but we were corresponding back and forth through email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-1633A as presented, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report and proposed minute order, because the required findings have been met.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We need a second motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve the tentative subdivision map application DP 23-0090, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report, because the required findings have been met.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Before we leave this area, before we leave this, can I make a couple of comments, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
This, you know, I, I understand that this area is a little bit less in, or greater in density than, than the areas to the north. However, this area has been designated quite some time ago in the master plan as a receiving area, which does allow up to 16 homes per acre, right? So anyways, this doesn't get there, but it, it certainly is, is a, is a help. Now, previous members of the Gardner Ville Ranchos Improvement District have been before us before and indicated their concerns about the other areas that are designated as receiving areas. And I concur with, it's particular, John Sheridan has indicated that, you know, we do have, we're running, we're running into some issues here. We're landlocked, basically, with infrastructure from a road standpoint, and, and perhaps water. And so I think this is something that we really do need, as he suggested, review as we go forward in, in reviewing the master plan in the future. I think that's due on the schedule somewhere, time maybe 2025. But I think we need to take a look at, at those serious concerns about, about water and about infrastructure, especially roads, as we move forward in, in this particular area of our county, because we don't want to landlock our residents into there and, and put them in unsafe conditions. As you know, we, we approved the extension of the project, I guess it was Rancho Sierra Project down on Tillman, and, and the secondary access road out to, out to 88, and, and the requirements to improve that bridge that goes over the Carson River to ensure that we could get emergency vehicles in there and get residents out, and, and rather than trying to channel them back through the ranchos. So I know that those are all subsidiary subjects, but I, I still think we need to consider that as we move forward with this, this possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, gentlemen, thank you for what you have done. And with that, we will move on to item number 10, for presentation only. This will be the first reading, introduction of ordinance number 2024-1648, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nevada, designated by the short title 2023 Justice Center Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of Douglas County pledged revenues, Series 2025A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $37 million, providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants related to the payments of said bonds, and providing the effective date thereof in the introduction of two ordinance 2024-1649, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nevada, designated as the 2025B Medium Term Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of the, by the county of its general obligation, limited tax, medium term bond, Series 2025B, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $14 million, providing covenants, conditions, and other details concerning the bonds, the project, the general tax proceeds, and rectifying action previously taken in pertaining to the foregoing by the county and its officers and employees. Kathy Lewis and Zach Wadley.
You still haven't gotten past Melissa's proclamation.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney. These, these two ordinances before you are very lengthy. There's a lot of legally required language within them, but the short of it is, is that there are justice, our new Justice Center project bonds. And they initiate the process to, to issue, first, the, the $37 million piece, which is a 30-year bond secured by the county's consolidated taxes, in conjunction with, second, the $14 million piece, which is a medium term bond, which is basically a 10-year bond, secured by the, the general revenues of the county. So this is the first step to, to start that process. It's an introduction of the ordinances to, to sell those bonds. They will be back before you for possible adoption on December 19th of this year, and then we'll go from there. Any questions, I'd be happy to address.
I was hoping this was a, an actual item today, because I, but I guess that's the way we have to do things. It's not, so.
First reading, second reading.
That's why I'm saying darn it.
Any further comments by the board? All right, this is for presentation only, this is the introduction, and I see the county manager is standing by the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is for presentation only, but I can't help but to thank the board for your leadership. We will be having a public hearing on this item, and I encourage the members of the public who are watching to participate in this conversation. This is a momentous occasion for Douglas County history-making and an important decision for the county commission. So I just thank you and look forward to a history-making day to come.
Thank you. I think that this is right up there with the scale of approving the bonds for the Recreation and Senior Center. And this is something that has been needed, and you guys have done a magnificent job, and thank you for putting it together. And with that, we have had our first reading, and we'll move on to item number 11. Item number 11 for possible action, discussion on the adoption of Resolution 2024 R-120, increasing the South Tahoe Refuge Company's rates by the interim year rate adjustment of 3.23% for the 2025 calendar year as allowed under the terms of the franchise agreement. This resolution will also increase the rates, the rates by the previously approved 5.08 rate adjustment for the implementation of the three cart collection service program. The total cumulative rate increase for the 2025 calendar year is 8.31%. Douglas County receives a 3% franchise fee on the revenue collected from Douglas County residents in the Tahoe Township who voluntarily chose to be served by South Tahoe Refuge. And Mr. Philip Richter.
Commissioners, thank you, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works for the Record. What you have before you is a rate resolution for this coming year with South Tahoe Refuge for the Tahoe Township, as the chair has, has introduced. This rate increase was presented to the Joint Powers Authority, the South Lake Tahoe Waste Management Board, which Douglas County is a member of. That, that board is made up of the city of South Lake Tahoe, El Dorado County, and Douglas County as a, as a joint entity at the lake for all of the trash collection up there. At their October, let me get them back, let me remember where it was here. I believe it was the October, apologize here, October 11th meeting, and was approved by all three jurisdictions. And at that meeting, the rate study is, is analyzed, the Crow report is analyzed and reviewed, and, and it was acknowledged that it, that this rate was compliant with all of the standards and requirements. As I said, the, the board today is actually approving the 3.23% rate increase that is allowed under the franchise agreement for an interim year. And there's base year adjustments, which is every third year, and interim year adjustments, which is really based on the CPI in the, in the, in those non-base rate years. The anomaly this year, obviously, is the, with the new franchise agreement that was approved at the beginning of this year, during that, with that franchise agreement, the board pre-approved essentially the 5.08% increase for the, for the conversion to the three cart collection system that's happening at the lake. The other things I want to point out on this resolution is you will notice this year that there are actually two rate exhibits. Exhibit A is the traditional rate exhibit. That's on page 1803. It shows the adjustment in rates based on the existing collection model, which is the 32-gallon can and 45-gallon can system. It shows the rate increase from 2024 to 2025. More importantly than is the translation of that, of, of that rate model to Exhibit B, which is on 1804 in your packet, which is really the conversion to the, to what, what is now going to be the rate model for the three cart system. So in, under the three cart system, the residents at the lake, instead of having either a single 32-gallon can instead of having either a single 32-gallon can, two 32-gallon cans, or three 32-gallon cans, will be, have been converted to a 35-gallon cart, essentially the bear-proof cart, a 65-gallon bear-proof cart, and a 95-gallon bear-proof cart. So those are the three conversions. In the process of doing that, by the way, the, there was some, there was an overlap between the three 32-can rate and the two 45-gallon can rate. So there were certain residents who opted for a 45-gallon can and would use two of those. So those are basically the 90-gallon equivalents. South Tahoe Refuge, at their discretion, opted to use the lower of those two rates for the new cart service, really recognizing that a single cart collection system has some labor cost savings that is now being passed on to those residents. So the existing, the existing customers of the 32, that were using three cans, three 32-gallon cans will actually see a cost reduction this coming year. And that would translate, you know, going forward in the future. So they start out at a lower rate. That same cost reduction actually carries forward on to anyone that was using more than three carts. So the customers who had four, five, six cans, just because that translates forward. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that a significant number of residents or customers at the lake will actually see a cost reduction even though there's a cost increase. In that new rate model, you'll see that there's also, that we still are, we still will have the existing can rate as opposed to the bear-proof cart rate. And that is to support the existing bear box customers at the lake. They are free to convert at any time, but they also, under the franchise agreement, have the ability to retain their bear box system. So, and with that, I will open it up for questions. Oh, one last comment. My window dressing is the representatives from South Tahoe Refuge. They are in the audience here and available for questions if you would like.
Thank you. For the record, I was resistant of the new system. And they were gracious enough to bring the containers by my house so that I could see that my wife wouldn't break her back getting them out to the curb. I appreciated that. And yeah, the bear-proof boxes are yet to be tested in my yard. However, they're difficult enough for me to get open. So I assume I'm smarter than a bear, but I'm not going to guarantee that. So having said that.
So can we just get a clarification? You have a hard time opening the cans, but you make your wife carry them out to the front yard.
She's younger than I. Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, then I'm going to take my foot out of my mouth, and we will open this for public comment. Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. I need a motion.
I'll move.
All right.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2024R-120. Increasing the South Tahoe Refuge Company's rates by cumulative 8.31% for the 2025 calendar year as presented.
I was going to do that, but you beat me to it. Okay. Any more comments or questions from the board? None, please. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five oh. And thank you for coming off the hill. I appreciate it. All right. For presentation only, announcements, reports, and updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or lay as on to, and any other meetings, functions they have attended, and any requests by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. And we'll start at the far end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, so I did attend the, we had a Chamber of Commerce board meeting Wednesday morning. Last night, we had the enjoyment of having a Carson Valley Visitors Authority small Christmas party. The Carson Valley Visitors Authority has initiated a program this year called Carson Valley Christmas, where they are grouping up all of the activities that go, that we have available in our community during the holidays. And so, and trademarking it basically under one name. So I thought that was really good. This is the first year that they're kicking that off. They expect other people to join in on it as we get into the future years. But it's certainly a great way and a great encapsulation of all of our activities. In starting that off, kicking it off at 5:30, I believe, this evening at Heritage Park, the Towne and Gardnerville will have their annual tree lighting ceremony and fireworks. So I encourage all of our residents to go out and sample the hot chocolate and other things, goodies that they have available, okay? So, and then there's other activities this coming weekend, tomorrow night. And then again, on Saturday night, we have our parade of lights. So, and I guess breakfast with Santa in Genoa on Saturday morning. So a tremendous host of activities for our, and we want to become a, basically, and I, and I call it, I don't call it the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. I call it the Carson Valley Future Residents Authority. Because everybody that comes here wants to move here. But anyways, next week, we have our NACO meeting. We have one annual meeting in Clark County. And so next Thursday morning, we'll be having our meeting in Clark County in Las Vegas. So I'll be going down on Wednesday to attend that on Thursday morning. And otherwise, I wish all of our residents, well, we'll have another opportunity here before Christmas. But happy holidays, Merry Christmas, stay safe. Thank you.
I, two things to note. First, December 14th, the community center anniversary. I think it's 12 to 5. It looks like a fantastic event. The one thing I want to, a future agenda item is, as I prepared for the cell phone tower, Agenda Items 7 and 8, I found that our code requires a monopole without any aesthetic improvements, which is maybe at one point in the distant past was appropriate, but is hard to fathom that our county would not want to improve the looks of cell towers when possible. And so I know we can't switch rules midstream on these applicants or applications, but we've got to change that ASAP so that when we have future requests, we have the ability to require that they look as good as possible. So I would like that to be worked on and brought forward as soon as possible, even if we have, you know, understanding that it won't apply to the current applications.
So we'll drive down the street and we'll look at a space needle. No, we won't. Okay. My turn. Last week, three of your commissioners were privileged to serve the senior community lunch at the senior center. And I might add, they did themselves proud. It was a turkey, turkey lunch with all of the fixings. And it was very well done, very well presented, and downright delicious. So we were privileged to serve 400 meals to the citizens of Douglas County. And we have another one coming up right before Christmas. So we will be out there dishing it out to the folks in a nice way. And also, I attended a TTD board meeting yesterday, and we discussed some of the happenings already. We discussed the trail section. And we are in the process of, we have lost the general manager. He is retired. And Carl will be sorely missed. And we temporarily hired Jim Marino as our acting supervisor. And we elected, and I'm going to lose his last name, so maybe I shouldn't even say it, a new chair. The chair has been commissioner from Washto County. And the new chair is from the north end of the lake. And he has been dealing with transportation for years. And having just lost his name, I ate it, getting old's a, never mind. And I received a telephone call from the governor's office yesterday evening saying that Governor Lombardo would like to get more interactive with the rural counties. And so I will give him a list of happenings here in Douglas County. And hopefully, we can persuade him to attend our Christmas luncheon. And at least I know we'll have at least 400 people there. And if they bring in more tables, I don't know how they could. You pretty well maxed it out at the last one. So, and that's all that I have. Having said that, I will now open for closing public comment.
Jim Jackson, closing the bar again. And a lot of the discussions today, safety of the residents in the areas was brought up. River View Drive, many times has that been brought up. It was discussed, and the developer put in $60,000 so that you could make that a safer route. And it seemed to be very important to everybody that it was safer for the residents, for the golf carts, so they could cross the road without getting hit. Well, last meeting that I was at, sorry, I missed the last one. I had asked about a four-way stop at Johnson Lane in Fremont. It's a safety issue. I would have thought that would have been in this ordinance that was discussed today, but it was not. I have a sneaking suspicion that it's going to be turned down as we can't do that. Well, if it's somebody in the county that's saying that, fire them. You five have the right to make our lives safer. Johnson Lane in Fremont needs a four-way stop. Right now, it's not too bad, and there was a bad accident there. I don't know if anybody was hurt horribly or not, but by the looks of the two cars, they couldn't have walked away from it. Come spring and summer, when we have a tremendous increase in truck traffic, that intersection is going to become extremely dangerous. People are going to want to beat the trucks down the road so they're not following behind them. So they're going to try to cut out in front of them before they get there. The ATVs with all their trailers and everything come through there, paying no attention to the speed limits. People have been almost hit going through there. The other day, I was at that intersection, and a truck, not a Knox truck, so I'm not picking on Knox. It was somebody else, came flying through the intersection, and a rock about that size came bouncing off the back of the truck and around the road. Now, if they had stopped at that stop sign, there's a little bump there, that may not have happened. Now, what if there had been a car behind it? Or if I had pulled out there, you know, I'd probably be replacing a fender or a window for sure. So I think that's something that needs to be considered and approved, is a four-way stop at that intersection. That's not asking too much, I don't believe. I think you can afford it. I think if you don't, and when somebody does get hurt there, or worse, it's going to be on your guy's head, and I don't think you want to have that. I know I wouldn't. So anyway, thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. And be looking forward to the, what is it, the 19th is the next meeting. I'm sure there'll be a crowd here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned.